Welcome, everybody, to the April 5th, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers along with speaker request forms. So if you want to speak on any item on the agenda, please fill one out and turn it into Ms. Holly. So we're going to call the meeting to order, and I'm going to call on Ron Rosskine for the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ron. Next on our agenda is review and approval of the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, second by last string to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You meant aye for approval, right, Gary?
Yeah, there's a little delay.
Yeah.
For aye for yes.
Okay, thanks. Next on our agenda is executive proclamation for National Telecommunicators Week, April 10th through the 16th of 2022. The proclamation we have, I'm going to have Mr. Lassiter read the proclamation into into record, and then we'll take a vote on it, and we'll call it Mr. Kevin Carley to say a few words and invite his people up.
Thank you, Commissioner McCroy. Thanks for this honor and opportunity. Executive proclamation, Pennington County, South Dakota Board of Commissioners. Whereas Pennington County recognizes the significance of the Emergency Communications Center to Pennington County and its citizens, and whereas emergencies requiring police, fire, or emergency medical services can at any time without notice, and whereas prompt emergency response is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers, deputies, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained by public safety telecommunicators from citizens who report emergencies to the Pennington County Emergency Services Communication Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, deputies, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, relaying information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Pennington County Emergency Service Communication Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas public safety telecommunicators exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job each and every day, therefore, we, the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, Pennington County, South Dakota, hereby proclaim April 10th through 16th, 2022, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Pennington County to honor the Emergency Service Communication Center Public Safety Telecommunicators whose diligence and professionalism continue to keep our community safe.
Thank you, Mr. Lassiter. Before I take a comment, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Rosskine, seconded by Deb Hagcock. Discussion. Sam, do you have any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Lassiter.
You know, my background is EMS, and I've worked with telecommunicators, not necessarily the ones here in Pennington County, but in other areas, and so I'm very appreciative of all the information they collect and how they are able to keep patients. My primary area was ambulance services, so how they're able to keep patients or their families calm and collected as we get on scene. So I just want to say a personal thank you for all the work that you do because I understand what you guys go through each and every day when you get those calls. So thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
I agree with Commissioner Lassiter. Without our telecommunicators, a lot of things wouldn't be happening like they are today in a smooth manner. We appreciate everything they do for us. Long story short, we have a lot of different agencies that they deal with every day, and that's a lot of work, and I don't think people understand how much work it takes. So we appreciate you very much and everything our telecommunicators do for Pennington County. Thank you.
Ron, Jim?
I'm going to wait for Kevin to come up here. I got a couple of questions.
Mr. Drews, do you have any comments? Taking a nap? I just, I'll echo what our commissioners just said. I think you guys do an outstanding job, and if it wasn't for you, there's a lot of people that would be hanging out there in limbo. So you guys are working 24/7, holidays. All of that means a lot to this community, and we appreciate you. With that, we'll go to a vote, and then I'll call Kevin up to present him with the proclamation. So all in favor of the proclamation indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Kevin, could you come up and say a few words and introduce your staff, please?
Apologize. I got to learn how to run my mute button better.
Did you want to say something before Kevin starts?
No, I just, I appreciate them coming with the proclamation. Well-deserving of it to proclaim National Telecommunications Week. Just thank Kevin, and it's true.
Thanks, Gary. Kevin?
Good morning. Kevin Carley, Director of Pennington County, 911. Thank you for taking the time to help us. So appreciation to our 911 dispatchers and what they do. They work behind the scenes, and they don't always get recognized for the hard work and dedication that they display on a regular basis. So Telecommunicator Week is an opportunity for us to do that and kind of shine the spotlight on them and remind everybody how important they are and what a valuable role they play every day. So thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. At this time, I'd like to come invite the commissioners down to hand you the proclamation.
Mr. Chair.
One question for Kevin.
Ron, Rosskine.
I was with our Human Resources Director the other day, and he explains that if we lose an employee and we have to bring another one on, that we're talking a minimum of 12 weeks to train. That's, you know, a major investment at a cost of roughly $58,000.
Yes.
So it's really important that we have that retention and keep your folks and not have to train and retrain and retrain and spend $58,000 each one of those trainings. So thank you for everything you do.
You're welcome. It's a very complex job, and again, most people don't understand all the training that's involved and the level of knowledge that they're required to maintain and the certifications that they're required to obtain and keep. So again, this gives us a chance to remind everybody about that, so.
Thank you. Any further comment before we go down?
No. Thank you.
Can we introduce everybody?
You're going to make them introduce themselves?
Mary Shoemaker, Pennington County. I've been there for 23 years.
Mary Brooks. I've been there for about 23 years.
Victoria Swardine, 40 years.
Field degree I just started.
Congratulations. The proclamation, anyone guess? No? Holly would be better if they were back here.
Scare all the men and the all the kids.
Everybody just kind of make two rows right here in front. We'll take the picture quick.
Let me act like like, no, you're not it. There's exception.
Did I do good?
Thank you, everybody. Next on our agenda is item number six of the 2022 Board of Equalization Oath to the Office, and this will be given by Auditor Cindy Moller.
Morning, Commissioners. Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. Holly gave you all a copy of the oath that you were supposed to read this morning, so I would ask that you stand and raise your right hand and read your oaths, please. You want to read them, or do you want me to read it and you repeat after?
Let's follow you.
Okay. I instate your name.
Aye.
Travis Lattner.
A member of the Board of Equalization for Pennington County in the state of South Dakota for the year 2022.
A member of the Board of Equalization for Pennington County in the state of South Dakota for the year 2022.
Depose and say that I will fairly and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Board of Equalization for the county and state.
Form, depose, and say that I will fairly and impartially perform the duties of the member of the Board of Equalizations for the county and state.
That I will endeavor to equalize the assessment of all real property within the county.
I will endeavor to equalize the assessment of all real property within the county.
That I will seek to place upon the books of the tax jurisdiction within the county.
That I will seek to place upon the books of the tax jurisdiction within the county any property that may have been omitted.
Go right ahead.
Omitted by, omitted by error or neglect of the assessor or Board of Equalization.
I will faithfully and impartially perform all other acts enjoined on me by law to the end that all assessments within the above county may be complete and just and equal as between property holders.
I will faithfully and impartially perform all other acts enjoined of me by law to the end that all assessments within the above county may be complete and just equal between property holders.
Thank you. And if you'll sign those and give them to Holly, I'm going to get them signed. Try that four times. All right.
We got a, we have a busy month coming up. I'd just like to remind commissioners and all of us that when you're on the phone, when we have a person on the phone, it's hard to hear, so make sure you speak into your mics real good so they can hear us. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda, and I'll recognize Ms. Holly Hennies.
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of March 15th, 2022. Number eight is to assign the 2022 budgeted long-term reserve accumulations in the general fund as follows. IT equipment for $75,000, the inmate transportation bus for $125,000, auditor software for $40,000, treasurer's software for $40,000, human resource compensation review for $15,000, fire long-term reserve at $100,000. Number nine is to acknowledge the polling place list as the official polling locations for the June 7th, 2022 election. Number 10 is to acknowledge the election agreements and that the auditor's office will conduct a combined election with Rapid City School District, the city of Rapid City, the Custer School District, the Hill City School District, the city of Hill City, and the city of Quinn, which will be held on June 7th, 2022. Number 11 is to accept the recommendation for the appointment of Mr. Kevin Keane and Mr. Kevin Burton to the Pennington County Planning Commission. Number 12 is to acknowledge disinternment permit, number 1453427, and number 13 is approval of the adopt a highway application for a portion of Sheridan Lake Road by the Black Hills Clean Water Alliance. Oh, and number 14 is to approve the joint cooperative agreement between the city of Rapid City and Pennington County regarding the administration of the Run Justice Assistance Grant Program Award asked of anybody in the sheriff's office.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Is there any member from the public that would like anything from the consent agenda removed for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'd go to the commission. Any commissioners want anything pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Moved by Rosskinek. Seconded by Ms. Hagcock to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're on to the regular agenda items. Item number 15 is the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission Member Appointment of Ms. Jermaine Littlebear. Is Jermaine here? Jermaine, would you like to come up, and do you have anything you'd like to share with us? How long you been on the board?
I've been on the board for one year, and I'm so grateful to be given the opportunity, and I thank the Pennington County Commission for appointing me to another five years on the commission. I, I'm really grateful to be, have, we have such a competent executive director who always provides us correct information in order for us to make decisions for the Housing and Development Commission. So, and we have a group of dedicated, I think, and competent members of the board, so I'm very grateful to be a part of it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jermaine, and we also want to thank you for your service on the board. It's, it's not, it's a thankfulist job that people do, so we appreciate your, your service. Any other further comments before we go to a vote?
Chairman.
Ms. Deb Hagcock.
I'd like to thank Jermaine as well. She has done a wonderful job for us. She has a lot of experience. She asks lots of questions, and it's really helped move our board forward on many things that we're doing for the future for Pennington County Housing Authority. So thank you for your service as well, Ms. Jermaine.
I will point out that Ms. Hagcock and Mr. Rosskinek are both board members now and have brought back a lot of information to this commission that's helped us with what you guys do, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to echo Commissioner Hagcock's. Thank you for your service and looking forward to the next five years, or at least maybe four for me, but congratulations.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Move to appoint Jermaine Littlebear to the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission for a term of five years ending April 6th, 2027.
Thank you.
Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Ms. Hagcock. Any further discussion? We have one person in the audience. You need to, need to come up and identify yourself, please.
Just be right in the middle.
Introduce your, your name first and then your comment.
Good morning. My name's Amanda Ruiz, and I was conceived, born, and raised here in this community, and I also wanted to say thank you to Jermaine because when I'm not busy with graduate school, I do a lot of volunteer. Over 37 years of volunteer work with our community, mostly with the youth, but what affects them usually comes down from the family. And so I just wanted to personally thank you because I call your office a lot, and I get really good information, and I'm able to go back to the Hope Center and other places to volunteer and give them the correct information. So I just wanted to publicly thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. That, that was very nice. Appreciate that. So we have a motion on the floor for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jermaine. Welcome back to the board for another four years. Thank you. Next, we go on to item number 16, which is I didn't recognize. Ms. Holly Hennies put an explanation on this.
Commissioners, thank you. Holly Hennies, Commission Manager. The agenda item on, for today is the Notice of Sale of Real Property and the opening of sealed bids for a tax deed property that the county has. It was brought to my attention on Friday that this particular tax deed has just shy of $17,000 in city special assessments associated and attached to it. We, we published the notice as legally required by statute, but I would like to ask the board at this time to reject all the bids received unopened and allow us to re-advertise with the disclaimer in there that city municipal assessments stay with the property and become the responsibility of the new owner if they so choose to continue to bid. I just feel in full transparency that is the right thing to do. They do have the option to approach the city and ask for that to be forgiven, but there's no guarantee that that will be done. So I just would like to ask the board to reject the bids and allow us to re-advertise knowing and putting that disclaimer in there.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, just a second here. One question before we get. What about the people that assess the property? Do we have to get it reassessed?
No.
Okay.
The appraisal report will stand as filed.
Okay. Next, I go to Mr. Lassiter.
So what's, what's attached to the property? You said there's assessments on it. What do you have, what are those, or?
They are city special assessments. They are Rapid City Special Assessments, $16,700 and some odd dollars as of Friday.
But is that due to like unpaid taxes? Is it, can you?
I apologize. I don't know the details if it's a nuisance, if it's, what specifically it would be.
Okay.
Mr. Rosskine.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to reject the sealed bids and re-advertise.
Motion's been made.
Second, and then I have a follow-up, please.
And then seconded by Hagcock to rebid. Ms. Hagcock.
So are the people that bid on this that came today, do they want to speak at all on the assessment? And maybe they, some of them did know about the special assessment?
We, we felt it not appropriate to ask that in the event that maybe one of them did know about it, and their bid may, may tip the hand on, on the other bids if somebody else didn't know about it. So we just felt it the best interest to just cancel and re-advertise so that everybody's on the same playing field.
Okay. One thing, Holly, I agree, there's the $17,000 almost in special assessments, but someone did their homework and others didn't. Is, is that unfair to the person that did their homework and still bid? That's why I guess I, I needed to know if they knew or if they didn't know. Does that make sense?
May I comment?
Yes, sir.
I kind of agree with that, Deb, but on the other hand, I think that if we would have known the $16,000 was out there, that could have been for the building getting tore down, grasping mowed, so it's not something the city. So they may have overbid if, if somebody didn't know about it. You know what I'm saying? They may, it may put them in a hardship instead of because they thought it wasn't there. They could win the bid and be in a hardship worse than what we're sitting right now, so I think that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rosskine.
So there was an appraisal done on the property by three landowners for $25,000. So when I do an appraisal, I make sure that I go back and make sure that if there, if a property's encumbered or there's lanes against it, that should reflect the price value. So I'm assuming the $25,000 does not reflect the total or the true value of the property.
It, it does not reflect the, the special encumbrances, no.
Get reappraised then.
My understanding is that could stand as is, that it's just the value of the property is, is what they were appraising.
Yeah.
So we do have motion on the floor in a second. Is there further discussion? Ma'am, I'll, I'll look this slide one more time, but otherwise, we have speaker request forms. Would, would you like to make a comment?
You can come up then.
Please. You still got to identify yourself every time. Amanda. Yep. We're, we're live streaming, so.
Sorry. I'm great. That made me even more nervous. Amanda Ruiz from Pennington County. So I just, I'm a little bit confused on this, and so would that $17,000 come off of the value of the property, or would that basically be billed to the new property owner?
It would be billed.
It would be billed to the new property owner, and this was just as of last Friday.
Yep, so the property owner bid on it and bid $25,000. They paid 25, then they'd have to pay 17 to the city, which would make that's what we're trying to.
Make sure that everybody's aware that that 17 would become the responsibility of the highest bidder.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. Any further discussion? Seeing, seeing none. Gary, just as a, to reassure what we're doing, we're going to rebid, move the sale of the tax ID 27437 to
It would be moved to reject the sealed bids unopened and re-advertise for tax deed ID 27437.
That'd be my motion.
Thank you. I think we had the motion from Rosskinek and seconded by Deb. Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, this brings us to the coronavirus and local physical recovery funds, the ARPA funds. What we have is we have two presentation, three presentations today. We're going to have one from Box Elder's Clean Water Priorities Request. Number two is going to be then Rusty from Rapid Valley Sanitary District for water expansion requests. And then we have three items from Ms. Cindy Moller, our Pennington County Auditor with the standard allowance selections of recovery loss, revenue loss, allocations for county jail study needs, and then designation of ARPA funds. So what I'll do is I'll call the people up first for their presentations, and if there's any questions from the board for them, for, for those particular people, and then what I'll do is I'll, once everybody's done with their questions and presentations, I'll go to the board for any motions or directions. So is everybody pretty clear on that? Okay, so the first person up is the Box Elder Clean Water Priority Request. That would be, I don't have the names.
I am Matt Connor. I'm the Public Information Officer for the city of Box Elder.
Thank you, Matt.
I'd like to introduce our team. We have to my left Nicole Schneider. She's our city administrator and chief financial officer. To my right is Doug Curry, our Public Works Director. We also have Rob Tim in the audience. He's our grants writer and administrator. Rebecca Davis is our program manager, and we have Matt Nasz as our city attorney here, and Toby Morris is our financial advisor with Collier Securities. And in addition, of course, I think that Mary is here, Mary Larson. Brent Hendrickson is in the audience, Director of Marketing, along with Jason Dobbs, our Chief of Police.
Holly, could we pull up the presentation? Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
We are here today to present a compelling case for a Pennington County commitment, loan commitment to the city of Box Elder that will provide an exceptional return on investment to both parties and promote prosperity for the entire region. Now, this, this opportunity is actually going to leverage more ARPA funds for western South Dakota. And specifically, we are requesting a loan of $3.2 million from the Pennington County ARPA funds. And, uh, we're gonna address concerns moving forward about limitations and opportunities related to this opportunity. Uh, a committed, a committed city and county partnership and all related to this request, as well as, uh, taking some time for questions at the end. This is a unique and time-sensitive opportunity. And, uh, so what we all wanna take our time at the end and, and clarify and answer any questions that you have. Now, for this introduction, uh, before we move on, I wanna underline two elements of this request. The first is this loan proposal includes virtually no risk or cost to the county. And number two, it provides a host of both direct and indirect benefits to Pennington County and the community at large, and we'll elaborate on those as we go through the presentation. So, uh, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Nicole Schneider, who will present the financial details related to this request.
Good morning, esteemed Commissioners. So, uh, first, I just wanna hearken us back to last year. Uh, most of you are aware the City of Box Elder went to the State Legislature requesting five point eight million for Highway fourteen sixteen sewer main expansion and one hundred and fifty-first sewer main expansion. And at that time, we were unsuccessful in our request for state assistance. Since then, we have been working with the State D A N R and on mechanisms for funding on these essential projects. D A N R has offered a match of five million dollars in state ARPA dollars in the event the city is able to also commit an initial five million local ARPA funds. Knowing this and knowing that the city has outstanding projects and wastewater of uh, uh, ten million plus in Pennington County, the city and D A N R realize collectively there is opportunity to work with Pennington County to find a solution. We are here before you today to find a solution and to request a three point two million dollar loan of ARPA funds in com- combination with our one point eight million in ARPA funds in order to obtain a five million dollar match from the state. Uh, where's the clicker? Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. So just to maybe underline a few things, Sedida Wastewater Treatment Plant. Some of you were here and saw what happened when, uh, the city and the base worked together to put a wastewater treatment plant. The result of that, uh, fiscally is that over eighty percent of the revenue received into Wastewater Enterprise Fund is used for debt obligation and maintenance of the plant. This only leaves twenty percent of fund's revenue to manage the entire system. There's not enough money to take out loans for projects of this magnitude of eleven point nine million. And we would not be approved through credit council in a standalone or cra- request. So D A N R is aware of the city's financial situation in this enterprise fund and has recommended an ARPA match in lieu of eleven point nine million dollar loan. So the opportunity we have before us is working together, uh, to obtain five million dollars from D A N R and how it will open up hundreds of acres for development, housing, and commercial, and long-term sustainability for the wastewater system and move us forward in regionalization of wastewater in the entire region. I'm gonna allow our Public Works Director, Doug Curry, to elaborate on the regionalization concept.
Uh, Doug Curry, Public Works Director, first like to say thanks for the opportunity today to come out and meet with you folks. Um, a picture says a thousand words. Uh, as you can see by, see by the illustration above, these are the, the five clean water applications that are, uh, that we have, uh, currently applied for with the state. Um, Highway fourteen sixteen sewer main expansion, one fifty-first sewer main expansion, Westgate Sewer Interceptor, Cheyenne Boulevard Sewer Interceptor, South Box Elder Sewer Trunk Main Improvement. All five of these projects will improve the opportunity for regionalization for wastewater. And I just wanna point out real quick by looking at the map, as you can see, a lot of us have been in meetings lately with the state. Regionalization is the direction that everyone is desiring that we go. The upsizing of the, the sewer line on fourteen sixteen Cheyenne Boulevard would greatly, uh, put in place the ability for regionalization for wastewater uh, on the west side and northwest side of Box Elder itself. Our plant is capable of, of, uh, I think it's seventy percent, uh, capacity we still have available right now with the ability to double that in the future if need be. So, um, uh, it, it's just a great opportunity. Uh, all the countries aren't, or counties, ARPA funds would be applied. The number one priority would be fourteen sixteen. And then from there, we'd grow out to, to the rest of those, all five of those projects. It's a really unique opportunity that I don't think any of us would, would have found ourselves in. So I'm, I'm excited about the possibility of this. Um, with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Amanda so we can wrap this up for you. Yeah, as we, uh, begin to close the formal presentation, we want to underline that committed partnership between the county and the city uh, that can really reap these, these rewards for the community at large. It's a three point two million dollar loan request that really equates to over ten million dollars of both direct and indirect benefits to the region. Uh, highlighting the clean water projects that were just mentioned, uh, which are all in Pennington County, the improved infrastructure for the clean water and sewer capacity, uh, the additional acreage that's now open for economic development, both housing and commo- commercial enterprise and businesses uh, and the imp- implications for, for tax base. And, uh, each project encourages regionalization, as Doug Curry mentioned, which is a, a major directive from the State D A N R, uh, for wastewater and clean water in the area. So in closing summary, uh, Box Elder has one point eight million dollars of ARPA funds. And your, your loan commitment that we're proposing and requesting is for three point two million dollars. And that will free up five million dollars of additional state ARPA funds for this region. It's a, a win-win, uh, by, by any analysis. It's, it really, uh, is something that should be carefully considered. Uh, that three point two million dollar loan, uh, could be at a two percent annual rate. If you look at what the SRF loan rate is now, just as a, as an estimate, and it would be repaid by the end of twenty twenty-seven. That's ten million dollars of direct and indirect benefit for a loan of three point two million over four to five years. Now, I put the, uh, map back up and we'd like to open it for any questions or clarifications that you may need.
Thank you. Uh, thank you guys for your presentation. And I know you guys have worked hard as, as getting the communication out to the Commissioners also. Um, as you see on our agenda, we have like five items. So this commission has several options that they could do. They could allocate the funds right here today. They could continue this on to probably their next meeting to gather some more information. Or deny totally. I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna take comment, you know, questions from Commissioners and then see where they would like to go with this if, so you guys have an understanding of what we're doing here today. So I know Gary had a question, so I'm gonna go with him first if he can hear me. Mr. Drews, can you hear me? Always look up like there's a heaven up there. I, I don't, does any Commissioners have a question that they would like to put forward at this time?
Kevin.
Ms. Hagcock.
I guess the bottom line is there's lots of options. Um, we also met, some of us with, um, Mr. Hunter from DA or N R and, uh, he's with, uh, tell me what he's with, you guys. Ag.
Ag.
Yes. So he was talking about regi- regionalization as well, um, some things that we could do. Um, taking in account everybody that, um, wants to participate in that regionalization. I think, um, we need to look at all those areas before, that's my opinion, before we make a decision. Um, I think all of it is gonna be a huge factor in Pennington County, Box Elder, and the region for us to participate in some of these funding sources that we can help with. But until we see kind of the whole picture, I think, uh, at this time, I think we're just gonna, um, look at all the options and then see where we're going from there.
Thanks, Deb. It sounds like we got Gary now. Gary, can you hear me? If you can't.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you now. Do you have questions for, uh, the Box Elder staff?
Well, I do, but, and I apologize because I could not hear their presentation. Um, but, but my understanding from previous conversations, uh, is they're, they're asking the county for three point two million. Uh, and as I look at it, it looks like this money would be used for numerous projects. Or would this be used for a single project?
That's a question.
Sure, I, if I could answer.
Would, would it be used for a single project or for numerous projects?
Okay, I'll, I'll turn it over to Nicole.
Sure. So, um, you know, if, if we need to divvy it up and give you a specific project, it's what our Public Works Director said. It would go to fourteen sixteen, um, wastewater upsizing on that main and rehab.
Okay, okay. So, so what you're saying, Nicole, is, is you would need to do it for a number of projects. And one of the problems with the usage of ARPA funds is it does require considerable documenting as to how those dollars were actually spent. So are you proposing you would do all the federal procurement work? Documenting the accountability of the dollars used?
Yes, I would. I do that currently.
Actually can perform those duties.
Yes, actually I do that now. We have multiple federal grants and loans that we have, and I do that on a daily basis.
Did you hear?
So when I, when I asked Cindy Moller, our Auditor, just to give me an idea of how much time this might take, you know, if this is especially being done for several different projects, she said it would probably take at least one full-time person. Uh, because of the requirement standards, the accountability standards that's being laid out to us.
Right. If, if the city found that I needed additional assistance, we would certainly hire more people to do that work. We do have a new Grants Administrator who's actually helping me doing that work now. He's brand new. So we're prepared.
Okay, so, and I, this next question I've asked, uh, several times before, but I don't know exactly if I've got a response that I understand. Uh, do you have any other potential funding sources available in lieu of simply asking Pennington County to donate ARPA funds for these projects?
So we are not asking for a donation at this time. We're asking for a loan of ARPA funds, um, to create a match in order to obtain an additional match from the state. Our understanding from our conversations with Hunter Roberts and Andy Bruhl's at D A N R is that time is of the essence and that they will have expended all of their ARPA funds by September of this year. And so we are not asking for a grant at this time. Uh, we initially did because we thought maybe there's an opportunity based on the restrictive language of the ARPA and how it can be utilized. Since then, we understand from conversations of our City Attorney with, uh, your state's attorney, um, that, um, I guess the county's looking for a way to expend those funds um, in a way for your own purposes, and we completely respect that. Um, but we, we cannot leave five million dollars on the table knowing what needs to get done. So we respectfully are asking for a loan. We're not asking for a grant.
Okay. Do you have a follow-up, Gary?
Yeah, I do. One more. Uh, uh, have you searched out the possibility of bonding this through a project surcharge? Cause I think you probably have, uh, the ability to raise water and sewer rates and, uh, generate income that way too. Is that something that you've looked at or not?
Yes, we have. And so that's twofold. Um, going and getting a surcharge and applying it to the citizens of Box Elder. Right now, we're already the highest. We have the highest rates in the entire region. Um, there would probably be a lynching at our City Hall. Um, so it's definitely something we've looked at. We've been talking to D A N R. And when D A N R was D E N R, we were talking to them about it. Um, the, the situation we have before us is specifically a match for ARPA funds. It's not, if, if we go and get a loan, we don't get the match. It doesn't work that way. So, um, that's why we're before you. If it was as simple as us going and getting a loan, our own loan through Andy SRF and then getting the five million match, we would definitely have done that already and not been before you. So, um, that's why we're here, is we're doing this based on advice from D A N R.
Mr. Chairman, if, if time allows, at the end, I, I would have a statement if I weren't in time to.
Okay.
I'll stop with my questions at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Drews. I'll make one comment, uh, on, on this right now. Just from what I've heard so far, I think me personally, now I can't speak for the rest of the Commissioners, you know, we, 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 we've talked about Pennington County's needs as a whole. And I think we've identified some things, but we just don't know what's all available at this point in time. So I think it would be a little premature to move forward with allocations without making ourselves whole and all Penning County taxpayers whole with using these funds at this point in time. At the beginning of, of the presentation, I'd made the comment that, you know, we have three options. You know, we can approve it. We can continue it to next week till we get more information as we have these five, or, or deny it. So I'm in the point, I'm, I'm in the, uh, category of continuing it to our next meeting, but, uh, I definitely would like to hear from the rest of our Commissioners to see where they're.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Ross.
I guess what I'd like to point out is that we, I'd like to see what our financial obligations are going down the pipeline just to make sure that we're in a position to do this. Uh, we do have a jail that, uh, has some infrastructure issues and are, we're looking at somewhere between twenty-eight and thirty million dollars. And, and this is, uh, things that we, I think that we have to sit down and consider this before we make a decision today. So I'm also in favor of maybe doing a little more due diligence between ourselves and working with City Box Elder and try to come up with a, a solution, uh, at the next meeting. But I, I think everybody's on board. We wanna do everything we can, but we just gotta make sure that we take care of our needs as well.
Okay, Mr. Lester.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, first, first and foremost, I'd like to say, uh, I like the loan aspect of it, cause that was one of those aspects that I was talking earlier about when we first had, had some of these conversations. But with that aspect of it, um, how do you see that, the term of that loan being? How do you, do you, do you believe y'all can meet all the requirements of the ARPA funds to have them obligated before uh, the deadline of having them obligated? Cause I, I know there's some nuances in that, and I don't know what they are right off the top of my head. But, you know, my, my concern is that those ARPA funds, if they don't get retracted or taken away, can you have them allocated?
Yes, absolutely. And, um, actually I have our City Attorney here. He could probably speak more specifically to that. They've done research on that, and that is why we are offering it, because it is allowable.
Thank you, Commissioners. Matt, non-City Attorney of City Box Elder. I think the, the issue with the timing of the, uh, obligation and expenditures of the ARPA funds relates to that twenty twenty-four and December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six timeframe. Um, and whether or not the funds are specifically directed to, uh, a project by the recipient, which in this case would be the county, or by a sub-recipient who has received the loan, the initial projects need to be incurred, which means the, uh, obligation needs to be made and then expen- by twenty twenty-four and then expended by twenty twenty-six by the sub-recipient, which would be, uh, required, the project the sub-recipient receives the loan for would be required to be an eligible project, and would also be required to meet those timing obligations. So whether or not it's a grant to the city of that money, or the city's use of its own money, ARPA money, or a loan from the county of the county's ARPA money, the timing of the obligations remains the same. That said, there is language in the rules that allows for the repayment of the obligation to extend- to extend beyond December 31, 2026. There are different accounting nuances that would need to be, um, figured out frankly, but I think that could be done between the county's commitment and the actual written, um, agreement between the county and the city regarding the utilization of those funds. But the, the obligation, the timing of the obligation and the incurring of the expense would remain the same under the loan obligation. However, there's language in the, um, rule, the final rule implemented by Department of Treasury that would allow the loan proceeds to be paid back after that December 31, 2026 timeframe.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Matt. Mr. Laster.
Um, so, according to your presentation, and, and I followed right along with you, but according to your presentation, uh, there's an expectation, uh, at least in the presentation, to be repaid back by the end of 2027. So, you think even if you expend it all in 2026, and I'm just hypothetical here to make sure you spend on all those funds, you believe that that's a long enough period of time to actually repay it back from 2026 to 2027? You think you can recoup it? If you can recoup it that fast, how are you going to be able to do that?
May I, Nicole? Um, state law allows, uh, for cost recovery mechanisms for both sewer and water and those, those, um, statutes are found in 947 and 948 respectively. So, there are opportunities for with municipal, and I think county projects, frankly, I don't know, but at least with municipal projects, sewer projects, for cost recovery to be, um, gathered by the, the municipality as, you know, land is developed, for example. Um, so, to answer your question, while 2027 wouldn't necessarily be a hard date, there are certainly legal mechanisms in place to allow the municipality to recover the costs of any project and therefore pay back the county with that cost recovery mechanism. It's been done, um, it's been done in Harrisburg, for example, where, uh, the City of Harrisburg has partnered with the, the school district there and utilized a cost recovery mechanism to help with sewer lines. So, this isn't a, a brand-new concept that we're coming forward to you with today. It has been done. It's been done successfully and given the, the number of users in the area and the number and the, and the pace of development in the area, uh, you know, the best estimate was we could have that repaid utilizing cost recovery or other mechanisms available by that 2027 date. And that's what I was including within the documents.
Thank you very much. It does.
Any further questions from the Commission? I'll go to Mr., yep.
Yeah.
Ms. Haggard.
Um, is Mead County helping you guys out at all with any of your water or sewer, any of your infrastructure at all?
All the projects are located within Pennington County and so we did not approach them because we felt that they probably would not be receptive to the match at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one final.
Mr. Laster.
Um, how does this impact the incoming B-21 mission that, um, that's coming to Ellsworth?
Did you want to speak on that? It does impact it in a, in a great way. Um, if you look at the map, uh, you can see, um, where the different, um, lines that are being upgraded and installed are actually directly impacting workforce housing that is going to be coming in. Um, it allows those houses to be more affordable. Right now, most of you are aware that developers are having an issue with being able to provide affordable workforce or career housing. And so, um, this would definitely give them a leg up and allow them to expand and build those homes more in a more tight timeline, um, and meet those needs. Um, so, um, if you look, um, sorry to use my finger, but just that Cheyenne Boulevard area and the 151st, um, there is great opportunity right now for a lot of that to be developed within the next two to three years.
Chairman.
Hold on, let's see if he's got a follow-up.
Uh, I think in addition to that, um, if, if the economy tomorrow took a, a turn, I think that we're all solid in the fact that the B-21 mission is still coming. So, for those developments, commercial and residential both still to take place, that, that's gonna happen.
Thank you.
Ms. Haggard.
So, for us, maybe there's some options too. Maybe we don't have 3.2, maybe we have 1.2 or something like that. Um, I'd actually send us some options as well. What, what is your priority? Um, if we had to change and not be able to give 3.2, maybe we could give 1.2 or something like that. Um, kind of prioritizing, uh, what you needed first.
Sure. So, you should have received a handout as far as your packet goes and it has summaries of each of the packages, I mean, each of the projects. And at the bottom, it has a priority list in a square and it has 1416 at the top. And so, 1416 would still be the priority.
Must be in your old one.
Commissioner Haggard. It's this page right here. It's this packet.
Okay, thank you.
And it's the second page.
That's okay.
Okay. You have a follow-up, Deb?
No, I don't.
Okay, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask Mr. Drew, he has a final comment, and then I would request, uh, a motion from the board. So, Mr. Drews, are you still, can you hear me?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yep, you, you got the floor.
So, so, so really, my, my final comment on this was going to be that the, the county really doesn't have any options available to raise funds. You know, state law limits our main resource of funds to the property taxes, but we don't have the availability to collect sales tax or implement rates on things like water and sewer. Granted, these ARPA funds are awarded to the county or above, but we would normally receive, but we also have several necessary projects, which will easily use up all the funds we are designated to receive. And one of those projects alone carries the cost of somewhere close to the 30 million, if not over 30 million dollar category and replacing the water and sewer lines in the jail. That was my final comment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Drew. At this point in time, I would look for a motion from the Commission. To either continue till the next.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to continue until our next meeting on April the 19th.
Second.
I have a motion to continue to April 19 meeting from Ross Connect and seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, folks. You guys have done some outstanding work. We appreciate it. Uh, this isn't dead yet, so please keep in touch with it before our next meeting. Next, we come to Rapid Valley Sanitary District presentation and, and request, uh, Rusty Schmidt. I recognize. Now that you've seen how the first one went.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for your time and consideration today. Um, the proposal, um, that I permit shown before you is, uh, strictly, no, not Rapid Valley Sanitary District projects. Um, let me pull these up here. Where do I go then? Okay, thank you. Uh, the proposal I have before, for you is strictly, uh, for a regional aspect. And, uh, the sanitary district was, uh, reached out to, well, over a year ago by D A and R, um, and then, uh, you know, currently as well as Box Elder, Valley Heights and the surrounding communities, to see if we would assist in, uh, um, providing a redundant water source for them. Um, Rapid Valley is, uh, very open to, uh, sharing our resources and providing this assistance. So, the project is a connection of a 12-inch water main from our existing 12-inch PVC water main and a 2 million gallon storage reservoir. Um, basically for the redundancy, the, you know, for fire flows, for added capacity to be able to provide, uh, water when in need to Box Elder, Valley Heights and surrounding developments. Um, the request is for the total amount of, uh, the engineering, um, estimate of the 5.4 million with the aspect of, uh, achieving a grant, a match from D A and R to, uh, provide more source water, whether that's wells, um, which is wells, we're doing a well-site evaluation as we speak, and as well as more surface water rights, more stories above and beyond that. Um, I think it's key that all the entities in the area that we work regionally together in a collaborative effort, not a unilateral one. So, a more collateral where we all, uh, you know, we share the same visions and, uh, in the future to, to help out all of our consumers, not just for Rapid Valley Sanitary District, not just for Box Elder, Rapid City, Valley Heights, but we do have the ability to move this forward and this would be like a first step in the regionalization prospect. And, uh, can get this completed in a very timely manner. From my understanding, if this does go forward, we have the ability, uh, by May 1, if I'm understanding this correctly, to do a conceptual facility study to be submitted to D A and R and then by July 1 to, for the, the full facility study in order to achieve these funds to, uh, complete to move forward on this regionalization and redundancy to assist our neighbors. Um, the sanitary district, uh, we have, uh, natural flows and we have the source. Um, we currently, um, you know, are using approximately 38% of our natural flows, but we also have to be mindful, we have our own growth, we have 50% plus of our own growth. Um, so, that's what that other, uh, available resource we got is utilized for. But still, in the aspect of, uh, helping our neighbors and doing the right thing, we're willing to share our resource and, uh, utilize our treatment plant, um, capacities and the storage capacity that I'm proposing up here in the connection to Cheyenne Boulevard, which in turn, as I've had discussions in the past with Box Elder, this in turn is to assist the Valley Heights region and the development in that location.
Thank you, Rusty. Uh, I'll remind the Commission, we have the same option on this one as we did the first one. Uh, it's by all means not, uh, to push anybody off or anything like that. This is a time for questions and answers and, and some more research. And I do want to thank both Box Elder and Rapid Valley for reaching out to Commissioners and other people in the community as far as giving tours and, and updates on, on that. So, with, with that, Rusty, those are our options is we can vote on it for approval today or we can continue it till our next meeting so the Commission can have other, gather more information from the rest of our, what's going on in our, our Pennington County as a whole, or we can deny it. So, first, I'll go to the Commission now to see if they have any comments or questions for you.
Sure. Thank you very much. And, and whatever route, uh, decision the Commission goes with, I'll be happy to bring back to my Board of Trustees and for review and proposal.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I recognize Mr. Laster.
Uh, Rusty, thanks for being here. We've talked a lot about this project too, and I just want some clarification. Uh, I see your breakdown, the $5 million match from D A and R and the total project costs a 5.486 million. Is that the total amount you're asking from the county or you, are you asking a half of that so it'll be a match, kind of like we pay, we do half and then you, the, the sanitary district pays half, so we can combine monies to do the, uh, the full 10 million?
I'm, I'm requesting the whole 5.4 million from the county ARPA funds to, uh, to assist, uh, this regionalization to move forward. This is, this is a project that we, the sanitary district, uh, had no intentions of, uh, or had in the plans to do at this time. The water main, of course, uh, um, would not be done at this time. That would, you know, be done by developers as they move forward. Uh, this water tank is not a requirement that we have to have at this time. We do have our own projects that I could have proposed and asked for. I mean, we're expanding our treatment plant, we're retrofitting our third skid. As you all know, we're the first to do this new technology and, uh, but Rapid Valley's moving forward with that on our own, the same as the water we're actually implementing and installing for areas that, uh, currently are running out of water in their wells and such. So, that's the direction we're going with our funds and our projects and such. So, I thought, uh, this is a possibility, potential opportunity to assist our neighbors. We're willing to use our resources, to share our resources and assist them in that matter and, uh, do a more of a cooperative and collaborative regionalization. Eventually, maybe we all can expand on this and continue going forth.
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Rusty, with the expansion, if that expansion takes place, um, what do you estimate that reach or the, the number of, uh, individuals that it'll impact, especially, you know, the ones that are currently running low on water or that, you know, don't have water to their lot, so they can even build? What, what do you, what do you think the, uh, the impact to the community, you know, for, for Pennington County citizens will be?
Uh, the impact will be, if we can move forward on this, will be to provide, uh, uh, Valley Heights with their, uh, concern on their water issues with developments around Valley Heights, with the, even the growth, uh, within Box Elder. Um, like I said, this is, uh, and then, you know, the 12-inch, uh, improvements going over the hill to tie into a Cheyenne Boulevard is also, gives a more, um, responsible growth that directs it in that area, uh, for that aspect of things. So, there is a, and that's all within our district there, but, uh, the de- the definite need of this shortage on potable water, uh, in different locations is, uh, um, needs to be, uh, taken care of, I think, in short order and we are willing to assist in such matters. But it does help with development with this. We're not, uh, proposing of, uh, just a, a thousand gallons a minute or whatever. We, we are able to provide our water, all the water to, to that surrounding community if we had to, but that would put a lot of stress on the sanitary district as well. But I think the first step of this project is to provide redundancy for them, backup to where they can continue to stay within water supply, uh, do developments that were right in that general area of the Valley Heights location, um, and then move forward. And if, that the district can receive them funds, do the tank and water main project and then receive the, the match from D A and R, then we can, uh, go out and re- and look for and acquire more source water as well to continue this growth and move forward. There's a lot of landmass in between us and Valley Heights and Box Elder that, uh, is gonna fill in. Some of that is now within our district bounds, boundaries currently, but never to less, there is gonna be homes that are, people coming to this city, uh, homes need to be built. The, the whole purpose, uh, our whole mindset is just to, you know, drive responsible growth, but at the same time, when we have certain areas where we just recently annexed in, um, you know, with all the people coming to Rapid City and homes that are gonna be built no matter what, they need a place to stay. I mean, we all need to work together collaborati- collaboratively and, uh, push this forward. And this is just a big first step. I, as you know, you guys, uh, somewhat know me anyway, but we have, Rapid Valley has a lot of, uh, you know, innovative ideas and trying to move forward on new technology and, and different aspects to move this, uh, whole Black Hills community forward, so.
Chairman.
Ms. Haggard.
So, in this area, there's probably about 11,000 people from Pennington County, so it's a huge area. And it looks like, uh, for the future, uh, what I keep hearing is the corridor is 44. So, responsible growth would be, um, hopefully to be creative with Rusty in this area to move forward, um, and putting some of the water, sewer and some of the infrastructure in there. Um, I don't know how we get there and, um, what we're gonna do at this point, but I think it's a huge area, cause that's, like I said, a huge area of Rapid City that's right next to us in Pennington County. So, when you have 11,000 people in a concentrated area, that's bigger than most cities we have around us. So, any way that we could move forward for responsible growth in this area and, um, make it so if we're gonna develop it, that we're ahead of the game, not behind the game. So, I know Rusty is very good at what he does. I have, uh, this is his plant, um, his innovative wins for the future for the water. Um, I think it's something, again, between Box Elder, um, Rapid Valley Sanitary District that we try to work together somehow and be creative, maybe with loans or, or hook-up fees or something, uh, to make all of this come together regionally. So, um, I know Rusty, you've been working with Rapid City, you've been working with the D A and R, you've been working with a few areas in Box Elder, uh, to move forward. Again, I think we need to be creative and look at where we're going for the future and what it would cost us later if we wait. So, um, hopefully we can look at all these areas and for infrastructure and decide, um, where our growth's gonna be, um, where we believe we're gonna make the most bang for the buck, also, um, the best, uh, resources for Pennington County and putting where, um, they're gonna be best suited. Also, um, the best, uh, resources for Pennington County and putting where, um, they're going to be best suited. So thank you Rusty for what you do, by the way.
Thank you.
And Bernie, Ron, do you have a comment before I go to Gary?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I echo what Deb says. I just don't know that I'm in a position to make a firm decision right now. I'd certainly like to sit down with our auditor and just find out where we are healthwise. I hate to, I just, uh, I would like, uh, to continue until the next meeting.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Drews, do you have any questions before I comment?
I really don't. You know, Rusty's got a class act out there at the, uh, sanitary district. And, uh, you know, I really appreciate his willingness to participate and share with others. Um, he's got a lot of knowledge that, uh, certainly, uh, he's, he's allowing us to take advantage of it if we will. So, uh, thank you Rusty for your presentation.
Thank you.
Chairman, one more question, sir.
Ms. Haggard.
So maybe this is for Toby. Um, so if we decide to do any of these projects, um, people have to apply, right? When is that, um, deadline to get your, if, if we're going to help or we're going to give loans or whatever we're going to do, what is that deadline before we have to or they have to submit?
Thanks, Commissioner Toby Morris, Collier Securities. The, the D A and R is having a special meeting in May with applications in July. And, um, I think you, you very well know my travels throughout the state. I can pretty well think that by September, the money that was allocated from the legislature would be basically allocated to the community statewide by that September meeting.
And you can give loans, like the county can give loans to others in our jurisdiction? Or how does that work for ARPA funds?
Um, two things on that. One, there is actually an A G's opinion that stems back from, I believe, the late eighties, early nineties that allows a county or city government to relend out on federal money. And then within the ARPA rules specifically, it speaks to loans, uh, whether it's to small businesses. Uh, it's still a little broad in terms of, you know, is it a government to government? One of the things I did do is I did check with D A and R to see if they would have any issue on this. And Andy at this time said, no, he had not seen any issues with that whatsoever.
Thank you, Toby. I appreciate that.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to make one comment, then I'll go to the board for a recommendation. I think, uh, this is important, I think Rusty, and I think this board is very much interested in the regionalization of, of water sources and us all working together. And I know that some of that's in the works as we speak right now of, of getting this all together. And I have to admit, Rusty, I think, uh, you kind of kicked that off for all the discussion that's been going on. And so I think regionalization when it comes to, it's going to help us out when it comes to Missouri River, uh, project and so forth. So I, but I, I'm still, you know, at this point, I want to know where we're at because even with these ARPA funds, say we, our next meeting, we decide to take all that funding and be able to use it for something else that opens up our general fund, which makes it easier to do loans with, if we chose, so choose. That's my thought process on that. So we're, we're not totally out of the water, but we can look at some other, other options. And I think that's what, uh, this board kind of wants to do when we, when we say we want to continue to the next meeting is kind of look at some of those options. So those are my comments. Any final comments before we do, I do a request for a motion? Look for a motion from the board.
Move to continue this item until the next meeting.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Lassiter and seconded by Haggard to move to the nineteenth, April nineteenth meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rusty.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next on our agenda is Auditor Cindy Muller. She has three items that she is going to be discussing pertaining to the ARPA funds.
Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. Yes, all of the information that I have provided is in regards to the ARPA funds uh, that Pennington County received. The first thing that I would like to address is the revenue loss. And when the final rules came out on the ARPA funds, that, that they had determined that, um, the county or recipient could claim up to ten million dollars, uh, as a standard for revenue loss. Or you can go back and calculate, um, the revenue loss based on the first two years that we calculated our revenue loss. I don't believe the county would get to the ten million dollars. So I would suggest that, um, the county elect the ten million dollar standard allowance for revenue loss, and I would like a motion for that, please.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskine.
I'll go ahead and make the motion, move to authorize auditor's office to elect the standard allowance of ten million for revenue loss.
It's been a motion. Seconded by Haggard. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We've already been discussing the needs that we have at the jails. So I would also suggest that the board take the ten million dollars that was claimed as our revenue loss, um, and utilize, that the county utilize the ten million dollars of the state and local federal fiscal recovery funds, the ARPA funds, that we've claimed as revenue loss for future needs as outlined in the Pennington County jail study. They're moved.
And moved by Haggard.
Second.
Seconded by Lassiter to move the, to utilize ten million of the state and local fiscal recovery funds, ARPA that was claimed as revenue loss for future needs outlined in the Pennington County jail study. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
The final thing that I would like to address is the twelve million, uh, twelve point one million um, of our other twenty-two billion. So we have the twelve million left. Um, there are more restrictions on that. And talking with our state's attorney, um, looking at the final rules, um, we believe that those funds could be used for addiction treatment, mental health, and providing and administering social services and public benefits. So I reached out to Sheriff Tom and to Barry Tice, Director of Health and Human Services, um, looking at, at their numbers between the two, over the five years, we believe we could hit about fifteen million. So I would actually ask that the board designate the remainder of our ARPA funds um, to be utilized for the allowable expenditures related to addiction treatment, mental health, and providing and administering social services and public benefits.
So Cindy, you're saying you could account for the fifteen, up to fifteen?
Yes.
Does this board wish to continue this to our next meeting also? Or would you like to make a separate motion on this?
Um, I'll make a motion to continue.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made to continue this to the April nineteenth meeting. Motion was made by Haggard, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Cindy. And thank you all for here today.
Thank you for your presentations, folks.
Next, next we come up with, uh, items from the auditor. We're asking Cindy just to come back right back up, uh, liquor license and public hearings.
I need to make sure that I have these in order, I'm sorry. So the first item that I have before you is a special request for retail on sale malt beverage and wine license, and this is for the Rushmore German Club, um, for an event to be held on April thirtieth from nine AM to seven PM.
They're moved.
Been moved by Haggard, seconded by Lassiter. All in favor indicate, oh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item that we have is a transfer of alcoholic beverage license from the Peak Grill and Tap Room, um, owned by Hanson Investments Inc. to the Peak Grill and Tap Room, uh, new owner Allison Schmitz.
They're moved.
Second.
Moved by Haggard, seconded by Lassiter. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The final one that we have is a new retail on sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm License for Rushmore Candy Company located out on Highway sixteen.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Roskine, act for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Cindy. Next item nineteen is items for emergency management, which is the COVID nineteen up there.
Good morning, Commissioner Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. Um, I will, uh, keep my comments brief by and large. All of the metrics that we've been tracking over the last couple of years as we navigate through this pandemic, uh, all of the metrics that we're looking at are, are pretty much heading in the direction that we want them to head. Um, with, with potentially maybe one, one little hiccup and we'll talk about that. But, uh, state reporting numbers are, are weekly now, so they come out every Wednesday. So the numbers that I have, uh, for the state reporting are from last Wednesday. New numbers will come out tomorrow. But as of last Wednesday, Pennington County was sitting at a hundred and four, uh, active cases. So, uh, that's certainly a, a much better number than, than, uh, we have been at. Uh, positivity rate, again, that's that, um, that rolling average of how many tests are coming back positive skewed, of course, by how many tests we're actually privy to. Um, but those numbers are ranging anywhere from, uh, two and a half percent up to, to four percent, um, which are good numbers. We've, we haven't seen that positivity rate that low in, in quite a while. So that's, that's, uh, the last time I was here talking to you is up in like the fifteen percent range. So, um, those are, are really good numbers for the positivity rate. Uh, since we began this, um, we've had three hundred and forty-one deaths attributed to COVID nineteen in Pennington County residents. Um, in terms of vaccinations, at least one dose, so people in Pennington County that have had at least one dose were up to, uh, seventy-three and a half percent. So a little over eighty-three thousand people, uh, fully vaccinated. So the, the entire, uh, no boosters, but the entire, uh, um, sequence of doses were at fifty-seven and a half percent, so about sixty-five thousand people and change. Uh, fully vaccinated with boosters were at about thirty-six percent, twenty-three thousand seven hundred people. Uh, the other metrics that we look at, Rapid City Area Schools reports their numbers. And right now they have zero students and zero faculty out with, uh, COVID nineteen, which is fantastic. Uh, Douglas School District is the only other school district in, in Pennington County that regularly reports those numbers. And Douglas only has one student, uh, currently out with, uh, COVID nineteen diagnosis. Uh, so those are fantastic numbers. Uh, there are only eight, uh, uh, COVID nineteen patients currently in the Monument, uh, uh, hospital system. Um, so those are, are really good numbers too. And the, the Monument numbers are one of the numbers that we look pretty hard at. And I'll talk about why in just a second here. Um, some of the other big news or, or at least current news in COVID nineteen, um, the FDA has approved a second booster for those, uh, fifty years old and up, as long as it's four months after the first booster, and that's both for Pfizer and Moderna. Uh, and then for, uh, particular immunocompromised patients, um, you'd have to consult with your physician. Uh, there are, there's a second booster that, again, four months after your, your last booster, uh, for twelve and up, uh, again, for those that have very specific immunocompromised conditions. Um, the vaccine for six months to five years old, that, that next group that we're waiting for approval for, uh, all of the signs point to that being, uh, rolled out by the end of this month. So by the end of April, uh, we're looking for FDA approval for, uh, uh, the six month old to five year old, uh, date range. Uh, so the, the news that everybody's watching or at least seeing how it, it, how it plays out in the United States is, is obviously the, uh, the BA two subvariant of Omicron. Uh, right now it's the dominant, uh, subvariant in the world, dominant strain in the world, uh, accounts for about fifty-five percent of cases, we think, in the United States. So the dominant, uh, 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 subvariant in the United States. Um, that subvariant is really infectious and has caused some surges in Europe. We're just not sure what that looks like here. So everybody's kind of looking at the numbers and, and, uh, waiting to see really what happens. So most places have relaxed their infection control policies. Um, most people that want a vaccine have received a vaccine. Um, so at this point, it's a matter of seeing how that subvariant plays out in the United States. Uh, most of the folks that I, um, follow, uh, or, or I think they have a pretty good take on it, uh, expect to see numbers climb a little bit, but they don't think it will be the surge that say Omicron was for us. So, uh, they expect numbers to trend to back up just a little, um, but not to be a hugely impactful surge. Um, with the, uh, with the availability of home tests, which are largely untracked, um, in most of these numbers, and with the fact that a lot of the federal allocation of, for testing supplies is now becoming expended, um, we're testing less and less and less, and we're certainly privy to less and less of those results. Uh, some of the estimates right now are that, um, there's probably four to six times the number of, of cases out there than, than what we are seeing or what we're being reported at.
Hold on just a sec, Dustin. Gary, can you put your, uh, mic on mute?
All right, so, uh, uh, what, what we have is again, uh, lower numbers of tests are being conducted, period, and then we are privy to, to lower number of tests or the data coming out of that. So there's two things that we're kind of looking at in terms of gauging what COVID nineteen is doing in our communities and how it's impacting us. Uh, and those two big things that we're looking at is Rapid City is participating in the National Wastewater Surveillance System. So they're looking at, at, uh, at counts through the, the sewer system in Rapid City, which services eighty-four thousand people. Um, and so we look at those numbers and then certainly the, the really, the, the, the proof and the pudding is, is how many patients do we have in the hospital? We really look at those hospital numbers to see what's happening there. And right now we're, we're looking pretty good. Um, with that sewer, the National Wastewater Surveillance System, it looks like we, we, we've been seeing significant decreases, um, for weeks and weeks and weeks. And it looks like there may be a, a slight uptick, uh, in that wastewater surveillance program. Um, but, uh, really we just need to wait and see what happens with, with hospitalized patients. So, uh, that's, that's, uh, what we're doing at this point. The only other data point that I have for you is in terms of our flu sys, uh, flu season. I'll skip over the South Dakota numbers, but in Pennington County, um, specifically, we have about thirteen hundred lab confirmed cases, fifty-six hospitalizations and four deaths, uh, this year attributed to flu in Pennington County. So, uh, that was the quick brief rundown of most of the metrics we've been tracking for you. Happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Dustin. Does anybody have any questions?
Good, thank you, Dustin.
Seeing none, you're excused. Thank you.
Have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary, by the way.
I want to bring up, uh, the agenda disclaimer. The preferred practice of the board is to proceed through the agenda in order it is published. From time to time, the agenda items may be just disposed of quickly, leaving a gap in the meeting and the agenda prior to the next advertised agenda item start time. To utilize the time effectively, those circumstances, the board may move items up on the agenda to fill to get these gaps. I bring this up because we have, uh, board of adjustments at ten thirty, and we have a special needs, uh, in this item. And if the board so chooses, we, we have twenty-one A through E, which is, uh, the highway department. And we have items twenty-two A and B from human relations, human resources. And we have item twenty-three, public comment, that I would like to move till after, uh, a board of adjustments so we could address the, uh, special needs in a time of matter, if the board so chooses.
Aye.
So we have motion from Haggard.
Motion.
Second.
And seconded from Lassiter to move items twenty-one A through E, twenty-two A through B, and twenty-three public comment to after board of adjustments.
Twenty, items twenty through.
Do you want to do, I thought we can get through twenty, but.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
I think we can get through twenty.
Twenty might go.
So that, that is the motion.
Yep.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item twenty is item from equalization. I think we could take all these at once, if, once if the board so chooses.
Good morning, Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. Five abatements, couple of trailer houses that moved, couple of mistakes on owner occupied, and an exempt entity that bought a property.
Chairman.
Ms. Haggard.
Move to approve the abatement application for tax twenty-twenty-one for the following Iceman Homes Incorporated, parcel eight zero one one five five five, uh, seven twenty-two forty, Ellsworth Development Parcel, six eight five six, thirty-one eighty-four, Ryan Flick Parcel, forty-one zero eight one, one thousand six six four thirty-eight, Nicholas and April Kurt Cheval Parcel, eight zero zero eight two five four, thirty-two sixty-six, and George. parcel eight-zero-zero-eight-two-five-four-three-two-six-six, and George, I don't know his name, you can, parcel eight-zero-one-one-eight-one-six-three-five-ten.
Second.
Moved by Hancock, second by Lassiter, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Chairman.
Opposed?
Oh, sorry.
Motion passes.
Sorry.
Ms. Hancock.
Opening, uh, motion to open Board of Adjustment.
Moved by Hancock, second by Lassiter to go into Board of Adjustments. The first item on the agenda for appeal is that item A, Appeal Building Permit. Did I vote on that?
Yes, you have to vote on it.
All in favor going to Board of Adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item in the agenda, Board of Adjustments, is Appeal of Building Permit, COB P twenty-one dash oh-six-five-two, Tina Beckley, owner, and Les Berger. So we need a little background on this to start off with, I'll start, I'll recognize Brittany Muller, Planning Director.
Good morning Commissioners, Brittany Muller, Planning Director. Just some history on this, the Pennington County Ordinance Enforcement was contacted regarding a mobile home that was placed on the subject property without a building permit. After being contacted about the violation, Mr. Nordike and Ms. Beckley visited with staff on several occasions regarding the mobile home. As a synopsis, if the applicants would have come to the planning office and obtained a building permit before placing the structure, any issues with the property could have been addressed at that time. However, the applicants did not seek permission before placing the structure on the property and are now asking for permission after the fact.
Any questions for Ms. Brittany?
Mr. Chair.
Ron Rosskin.
So Brittany, why does it not qualify for HUD? Was it before?
It was constructed prior to the HUD standards.
So nineteen-seventy-five?
Yes, it was constructed in nineteen-seventy-five.
So then, we deny the appeal, then the mobile homes got to be removed from the site?
Correct.
Okay.
Or any other recourse, I'm just asking, it's pretty hard to displace somebody.
No, this was actually placed on the property without permits, so the building permit wasn't obtained prior. There is, you know, working with the State's Attorney's Office, in the memo that we had given to you, it's not a legal non-conforming use because it was never legal to begin with, meaning it didn't have a building permit in the first place. It does not meet the HUD requirements, and a variance is not applicable because it doesn't have to do with citing or topography.
So then if they move it, then where do they move it to?
Just for history, no, no other county or city in the surrounding area takes mobile homes without HUD stickers at this time.
Question for, probably legal, and for you, just for the Commission. What happens if we approve the appeal?
That would be a question for Megan.
And then I have a follow-up question, for you to think about a little bit. This is out in the Green Valley area, which has plenty of modulators that are older than seventy-five.
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So if the board approved the appeal, technically, the board has all of the same powers that Brittany does in her administration of her office at appeals, so she would have to accept the building permit, evaluate it, just like any other building permit. And then as far as whether I believe that's legal or not, I would say that I don't think that that would be the legal choice.
Okay.
Chairman. So there is more mobile homes in the area that are not in compliant with, same as this same mobile home that you're talking about today?
That would be, they would be legal non-conforming because they have been placed there prior to our ordinance change and the requirement for the HUD sticker.
Okay, so this is a mobile home park?
No, it's Green Valley, it's just lots with mobile homes.
So they bought a lot?
They didn't purchase the lot, the lot is owned by a different property, it has a different property owner.
I guess that's my point, and nobody told them that based on when they went out in this area, they saw these mobile homes that are like theirs, they picked a lot, this person that owned this lot didn't say, well, you know, you got to have a HUD sticker, you need a building permit to put your mobile home on this lot, before these people put their mobile home on there? It doesn't make much sense.
Well, there's some history, our Ordinance Enforcement Officer provided a memo for the Commission about conversations that he had had with the property owner and the gentleman that put the mobile home on the property, that they were aware that a building permit was required.
They weren't aware?
They were aware.
Before they put the mobile home on there?
It was, there was a partial mobile home put on back in August twenty-twenty, and then they made up in the violation because they had put the mobile home actually on it, because there was a mobile home that was stored on it, but it wasn't actually connected, so there's some history with that, because it was vacant for a while, that they had taken a mobile home off, and then went to put one back on.
So what's the solution, in some way, so these people still have a place to stay? There isn't a lot of, you already know, options right now for people to go move in different areas in Rapid City without, you know, considerable cost. So is there a solution, some way to work with the mobile homeowners here, so they can have a home?
Megan Krueger for the State's Attorney's Office. So in my opinion, the mobile home needs to be removed, because they put the mobile home on without a building permit. If they would have come in and gotten a building permit, they could have found out all of this information prior to putting the structure there. However, what they did is they got a violation, and then they were told they need to come get a building permit, so.
I'm going to tell you right now, I wouldn't have known that you needed a building permit for a mobile home, and I've been up here for a while, so I don't own a mobile home, I'm going to be up straight with you. So I don't know if they had, where they were at before, if they needed a permit, that they didn't know. Like I said, there was a landowner there that could have helped them out before they even moved this mobile home there. There's a lot of circumstances, bottom line is, is this mobile home, it's in violation because it's not HUD?
Yeah.
But is it, is it a mobile home that would be, you know, unsafe, would it be, is, is that the, why we're?
Deb, we're pulling up pictures for you.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Deb, I'll follow up on the HUD deal, when, I think nineteen-seventy-six is when they started building into standards, and we, the, not only the cities had this problem in other areas of people with older mobile homes not being able to move them into other courts because of these requirements, so they're kind of left in limbo. From my research, when I was reading through this agenda, when it first came, and it was okay, but we changed our ordinance to the HUD standards in between the two, that's why I asked of the legal ramifications of this, because quite frankly, Deb, you're right, affordability, you know, these homes can be brought up to, to good standards, they can, because I've done it, you know, that's why I was asking for that question of the legal ramifications, because I think in some cases, there are, we are going to run into some of these exceptions, because what do you do, we're going to create more hardship in the future, but.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rosskin.
So Brittany, the mobile, the mobile home had to come from somewhere, and so the person that held that mobile home, did they have to have a permit to take it off the site where it was, and then who's responsible? Once that gets to the site where it's at now, is it the property owner that probably just, just wanted a, it's my understanding that the home was gifted, but it's, it's my, also, I understand that the person that moves the mobile home is responsible for the permit, and the owner probably had no idea.
So this mobile home was removed from Mead County and brought into Pennington County? When you remove mobile homes, to my knowledge, is they do have to get a moving permit through our Treasurer's Office. I don't believe any of that occurred.
Any other comments from the Commission before we go to the applicants?
Mr. Chair.
Good.
So for them to move that, onto that property, they would need a, a moving permit, and then for them to place it on there, they would need a building permit, is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct.
Okay, for them to take it off of that property, they need a moving permit?
And a removal permit, what, a removal permit with our office is at no cost, it's just checks and balances with equalization, so they know when structures are moved, especially mobile homes, because they track those bid numbers because of taxes.
So since it can't go anywhere else in the county, or any of the surrounding counties, as you just let us know, what would she have to do? Is she going to take it to the, the landfill? A mobile home landfill, I mean, are, are we, are we pushing this on to, now she has to also dispose of this mobile home, since there's not a capacity for it to be somewhere?
That would be the case with any other mobile home in the county that doesn't meet HUD standards, so if we allow one mobile home that doesn't meet HUD standards, then, you know, then there's really no, I mean, then that should be in our ordinance, I guess, is what I'm saying, is because otherwise, we would be allowing non-conforming HUD standard mobile homes against our ordinance.
And do I understand, she started this process before the, the HUD standard sticker issue happened, but she didn't have the funds, so that, she started the process in twenty-twenty, then, and this, this piece of that ordinance takes effect, what, May of twenty-twenty-one, is that correct?
Correct, but the issue was, is that it was not legal non-conforming, because it did not have its building permits in place, so it has to be lawful at the time to be legal non-conforming, and that's actually a state statute, and it wasn't lawful at the time because they did not obtain the proper permits in accordance with our ordinances.
Okay.
Deb, did you have a follow-up before we go to the applicant?
Travis answered my question, but to me, in the pictures, the mobile home doesn't look that bad, I know that's not the point here today, but.
Are there any other pictures, or is it just the one?
We have houses in Rapid City that.
Okay, I am going, Gary, do you have any comment before we go to the applicant?
There should be more in.
No, I'm fine.
Okay, I do have a speaker's request from, from David Nordike, that's you, I thought that was you, so I'll let you go ahead and speak first, if you, if you'd like to, to address what you've heard so far.
Well, I understand what you guys are saying about the ordinance.
You just need to speak into, so that, that's micable, there you go.
So the thing about, I, I was the previous owner of the house, Tina was a friend of mine, and she needed a place to stay. I had some land I was losing, I would have lost the house if I would have left it there. I just gave it to her, I had a truck, then I was moving houses, that was failing, so she found a place, I moved it, and then, at the time, the house was not even livable, plumbing it froze up. And it'd been sitting in my yard for about six months, because I couldn't even get it into a storage, so, and that's also in Green Valley Estates. I know I moved the house without a building permit, or without the moving permit, but it was never even registered there. The timeframe, I just, I needed to move it off, because Pennington County was telling me it needed to move, so I had this land, I moved it, and it didn't work out.
So let me clarify, you had it on another property that you owned?
North of New Underwood, yes.
Okay, and then you got a violation for, to have it removed, and so you moved it to this property where you have it now?
Right, again, I, I needed to move it off mine, so I moved it there, and then I, I was following around behind that, not ahead of schedule like I should have, but the timeframe was I needed to move it, it was dry, and I just moved it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a follow-up, if you don't mind.
Okay.
What have you, so Pennington County required you to move it off the property that was north of New Underwood?
Right, because it was just sitting on.
Oh, Mead County, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought I heard you say Pennington, okay. Okay, so Mead County.
Pennington County, sitting on my lot for quite a while, because I had no other place to put it.
Okay, so it was just sitting on a lot in Pennington County?
Yeah.
And you?
Just empty, it's, my home was there, too.
And then you, and then you were told you needed to move it?
Yes. They, they requested that I move it.
By who? By who?
Someone in Pennington County.
You don't have a name?
No.
Okay.
Thanks.
One of the things I want to clarify for the Commissioners, I'm going to ask you, you made the comment, the, the pipes were frozen, and so that all needed to be repaired and fixed, is this house all repaired, water lines and all, and livable at this point in time?
Yes, it is, and.
And who did the work? Who did the work?
I did.
So you've replaced the water lines with PEX lines and?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions?
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Did you get, legally, does he have to have permits for plumbing and electrical on this building? Did you do it yourself without inspection, or do you have to get permits?
I'm not aware of any permits for plumbing.
Plumbing and electrical on this?
Electrical was inspected and passed.
Plumbing and electrical are through the state.
Okay, did you get state permits to do the plumbing and electrical?
The electrical was done and inspected, yes.
By?
Well, there was an electrician, they upgraded the panel, because it's two-hundred amp-ohms, and they came, I don't know who came and inspected it, I wasn't part of any of that.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, so this, this mobile home is livable. I'd like to try to find a solution, so she has a place to live. Can we continue this, to look into it a little bit more, to see if we can find some solution, instead of just to shut down today?
Yeah.
I'm in favor of that.
Attorney's Office is shaking her head, yes, so we could continue this?
For two weeks?
For two weeks, or we could approve the variance, correct? I, I just want to say, because this, there is some special needs here in this, this case, so.
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So at this point, there's been no application for a variance, however, I, in my legal opinion, don't think that would qualify for a variance, however, if the board wants a continuance in order to evaluate other options, I'm not aware of any other legal options that there are for this, other than being removed from the property. However, if the board wants to continue it, that is within your power.
So Chairman, that would give us two weeks to look at the place, make sure it's livable, see if there's any solutions we can find, sir?
That's a good point. Is the applicant okay with this?
That's her, but can I, can I just?
She's okay with, one, okay?
So the, the main thing is here, that the process started way back in twenty-twenty, once we were aware about a building permit, we started the process. She was charged a fine for moving on the property without the building permit, which she paid, when she paid the building permit, in, in that process, first the septic system had to be inspected, and then.
So you've done all that?
And in the meantime, you know, we were also talking to, about the taxes and the property, so wasn't any taxes due from Mead County, because it wasn't livable, so they just waived all that, they put it back on the tax roll in January, and she has taxes due.
On the tax roll in Pennington County in January of twenty-twenty-two, or twenty?
Okay, so David, what, what the Board is suggesting to do is to continue this for two weeks, and here's my thing, is I want to come out and take a look at the property. I've, I've redone some mobile homes, and I'd like to take a look at it, to make sure that it's acceptable for, to be able to communicate to the Board, that gives the Board time to investigate any legal ramifications that they may want to do, and if they're accepted, set through to those ramifications or not. So it sounds like she was okay with the continuance for two weeks, it'd be to the next April nineteenth meeting.
Okay, but that seems reasonable.
But, but that, that is good that you brought up, that you paid, since now you've paid the, the moving fees and. fees and all that so forth. That's good information to have. But please call back to Ralph. I don't have my cards with me. I'd like to get with you guys to make a site visit.
Okay. Thank you.
So is there a motion to continue to the 19th from Lassiter or by Hancock and seconded by Lassiter? Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, folks. Get with Holly with my phone number, and we'll set up a site visit. Next, we come up to variance VA 22-03 SD Communications, SDN Communications, or Steve. I'm going to destroy that name. Steve Angerhofer. Okay, we'll let the staff give us their report, then I'll call you up for your part of it. And on this item, Commissioner Ron Roskine will be abstaining from this because it is his property. So I just wanted to bring that out. And I'll also make the comment that I've had no discussions on this item.
Chairman, I am on. Gary.
Gary, you still there?
I am. I'm on.
Okay. So we got Gary and we got the rest of us on for the Board of Adjustments.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Deputy Planning Director. Agenda item B is variance 22-03. Their request is to reduce the required setbacks from 500 feet to 43 feet to a residential zoning district, including an agriculture district containing less than 40 acres for a proposed 120-foot-tall broadband tower. The applicant is SDN Communications. Their agent is Steve Angerhofer. Landowner is Ron Roskine. Location of the property is approximately 190 feet north of the intersection of Rochford Road and North Rochford Road. Property size is 1.08 acres, currently zoned suburban residential district. Access is off of an unnamed platted right-of-way accessing North Rochford Road, and there is no special foot hazard area on the property. When basing their recommendations, staff does consider a two-prong approach. The first prong considers whether granting a variance runs counter to the public interest. I have that up on the screen for you. I'll start with staff's responses with number one. The request appears to be a threat of safety to the neighborhood. The proposed support structure is 120 feet tall, and the closest single-family residence appears to be approximately 90 feet away, placing it within a potential fall hazard zone. Number two, the requested use does not conform to the neighborhood. There are five residentially zoned parcels within 120 feet of the proposed structure. Number three, the support structures placed within residential zoning districts are limited to a height of 60 feet and must be, and must meet setback requirements of the underlying zoning district. And I'll cover this a little bit more in my analysis. Number four, future land uses identified as suburban residential district, the requested use does not conform to the county adopting comprehensive plan viewed at 2040. And lastly, number five, there are two structures within 120 feet of the proposed broadband tower, one of which appears to be a single-family residence. And the second prong of the two-prong approach considers whether special conditions exist to grant a variance. Starting with number one, topography is steep and limits buildable area on the subject property. However, this has no impact on the height of the proposed structure. A 120-foot-high support structure is more appropriately located in an agriculture, industrial, commercial, highway service zoning district. Property history, as it sits today, there is no structures or utilities on the property. And on the screen, you see the current zoning. It is suburban residential district. Future land use identifies it as the same zoning district. This is a proposed photograph of what the tower would look like. This is the proposed location, allowing for the 43-foot setback. Block number two here, this lot contains the nearest single-family residence. This is another single-family residence on lot or the identified Lot 1. And there is a mobile home, appears to be a mobile home on another adjacent lot. Staff did perform a site visit. Again, these are the two nearest single-family residences. The applicant did not provide a rendering of what the tower would look like. So I did my best to place it on the property, given the dimensions. Over here on the side is where the proposed tower would be in relation to those nearest single-family residences. This is another photograph of my site visit. This is the mobile home, what appears to be a mobile home and where the tower would be. Another angle. One more. And this is the view facing south. This is the topography of the proposed location. It is very steep. I'll get to this slide in just a minute. The request was announced for interdepartmental review. County Highway and Emergency Services are both in support of this variance. Highway Department noted that an approach permit must be filed with the Highway Department. Access to the lot must be improved. Forest Service also supports utilization of private land to accommodate this telecommunications sever. Staff has also received multiple emails from local property owners that object to this request, and they are included in your packets. I believe two of those came in this morning. Hopefully, they made their way to you. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is proposing a 120-foot-tall telecommunications support structure within a suburban residential zoning district. Zoning ordinance requires that it be limited to 60 feet in height in a residential zoning district. The proposed support structure exceeds the 60-foot in height, therefore requires a telecommunications permit. Under those requirements for a telecommunications permit, support structure must meet the setback requirement of 500 feet. Zoning ordinance also states that zoning ordinance allows four support structures up to 199 feet tall, but states that they shall be permitted in light industrial, heavy industrial, commercial, and highway service zoning districts. Minimum distance from the property which support structure is to be located on shall be at least 500 feet from any residential zoning district. The applicant is requesting to reduce the required setback to residential zoning district from 500 feet to 43 feet. A 500-foot setback is required to a residential zoning district as to not harm public safety, health, or general welfare of the community or create a nuisance. Staff does believe there is a valid need for broadband communications in the Rochford area. However, the applicant's request is not in harmony with existing lots, current land uses, or future land use designations in the area. A 120-foot-tall communications support structure is more appropriately located in agriculture, industrial, commercial, highway service, or open space zoning district where the 500-foot setback can be meant. Late last week, the property owner did provide staff a letter regarding the project, or regarding a project dated June 1 of 2021, stating that the applicant, SDN Communications, intended to place the proposed structure in a more suitable location on US Forest Service lands. The current status of this project is unknown, and I believe a copy of this letter has been provided to you in your packet. And this is a copy of the site plan that was accompanying that letter. You can see that this is the town of Rochford. The proposed location for the variance is right about where the corner of this little box is. But this would, this proposed location would be on US Forest Service land. And I didn't evaluate it for the 500-foot setback to a residential zoning district, but it is more appropriate on US Forest Service lands. With that, staff recommends denial as there's no special condition that would excuse literal enforcement of the Pennington County zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Jason. That was a lot of information in a short period of time. Steve, did you want to, I've got four speaker request forms. Do you want to wait until after that? In the spirit of transparency, I just want to make you aware that Mr. Roskine's abstaining, you're the owner of the property?
Correct.
And I know I can go around to the commission. Is any of the commissioner any discussions with Mr. Roskine on this? I have not.
I have not.
They have not. Gary, have you had any discussions with Ron on this item?
Say again on that, Lloyd.
Have you had any discussions with Commissioner Roskine on this item that he's abstaining from?
The only discussion that we had is that it had been approached to have a tower on his land because other property owners were either unwilling or not willing to allow it to travel through their, through their property to existing property. So no, we've really not, we've not discussed any details relative to it.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to make that clear for everybody in the audience that the situation is, and I communicated with Mr. Roskine. If he wants to speak on the item, he'll have to come down from the dais and do it from the podium if he wants to speak on it.
Chair.
Got it. I'll recognize Mr. Roskine.
Ron Roskine, property owner. So a little history of the properties. I worked with the Forest Service on various issues, and I was about, 2021, I got a letter from Jim Guppels, who's the district ranger for Mystic, indicating that there's going to be a cell tower in Rochford, Silver City, and Nemo. A couple of months later, I met with Jim. Jim says, you know, I said, how's the cell tower going in Rochford? He said, that's, it's really not going because of the, couldn't get the easement across the driveway. So when I indicated I had some property, I wasn't doing this to harm the neighbors. I was only doing it in capacity of trying to provide adequate cell service in Rochford in the case of emergency. So sorry it got to this point, but here we are. But I, I did not go out looking for this. I just basically thought I was doing the community a favor by providing cell service.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the transparency, Mr. Roskine. Next, I'll go to speaker request forms. The first one I have is James Wolfe. Just please identify yourself for the record and.
Thank you. My name is James P. Wolfe. I live north of Rochford. I'm part of the Rochford community. I am Chief Two of the Rochford Volunteer Fire Department. So I want to address two comments first. One, that emergency services are in support of the variance. We have indicated to SDN, the sponsor of this program, that we support a tower in Rochford, but not this location. We were specific, we were not providing any specifics. We just said we do need additional support for air communications. The second thing is that Mr. Roskine referred to this as a cell tower. That's technically not accurate. It is, as far as the general public's understanding of what a cell tower does, this does not provide cellphone service. It provides internet access. That is the broadband wireless internet access. Unless they get a co-user on the tower, there is no cellphone service. So at this point, there is no agreement between SDN and any of the cellphone providers. So again, that is, this is not providing any service to that. I fully agree with the contentions of the, or the interpretations of the Planning Commission staff that this does not conform to any reasonable interpretation of the telecommunications facility Section 316 ordinance. For all the reasons they said, it's in a residential area. It's a 300-foot required setback to begin with in the ordinance. And to reduce that to a 43-foot setback is just, why have a 300-foot setback to begin with? Why not just set it at zero? This is a gross misinterpretation of what is reasonable based on the original ordinance. Under aesthetics, Section E of the ordinance, telecommunications facilities shall be designed to minimize the visual impact on the surrounding environment and shall be compatible with the aesthetic character of the surrounding area. The antenna and support structure shall be designed to blend into the surrounding environment with use of camouflage, stealth technology, and other means. We have seen nothing as far as disguising this or having it blend in. And Rochford as the only living ghost town in the Black Hills, a steel tower or aluminum tower of 120 feet certainly doesn't blend into that image. New support structures. The ordinance also states that the placement of the support structure shall be governed by the setback requirements of the underlying zoning district. Well, it doesn't. This is a residential area. Now, Section G of the ordinance, telecommunications facilities and support structures permitted by a telecommunications facilities permit. Any telecommunications facility or support structure that does not meet the requirements of Section F, which was gone through by the staff here rather well. The setback, the minimum setback for all property lines would be 1.1 times the tower's height. So the minimum setback should be 132 feet if you're providing a variance, not 43 feet. We have two structures within a fall radius, and I just wonder what a fall of a tower, a powered tower, would have on those two? And what additional training the fire department's going to have to have in order to be able to provide extrication and turn off the power?
Gary? Can you stop?
I'm on a conference call, but I can.
Can you move to your phone, Gary?
I'm just going to take off your telly, and we're going to check out your ID.
There we go.
Thank you.
And James, are you, you're kind of losing me with your, going through the ordinances with H and B and stuff, so.
Well, I think it's important for you to understand that, as the staff said, nothing conforms with the reasoning for a variance. So I'll give you a break.
Well, no, I just wanted to pass on, you know, what the staff recommendations are for denial and that we have read our agenda. But I get your points. You were just going to lose me on some of that stuff.
Right.
So James, did you have any final comments?
Nope, this is just wrong.
Okay.
Thank you. And I am surprised that you continue to sit at the dais because that gives an impression that you are still going to be commenting or having an influence. But thank you, though, for making it clear that you won't.
Thanks, James. And I was very clear at that, the beginning of this agenda item, so. Next speaker request form comes from Todd McVay or McRae? I couldn't tell if that was an R or an A or?
It's McRae. Tom McRae. I'm a landowner in Rochford. I have the cabin right next to the Moonshine Gulch. It's been in our family since the 1950s. I'm only going to make a couple of points because Jim, I think, covered it pretty succinctly. You know, they centrally put in fire optic cable two summers ago, so we don't need another internet provider for a town that houses about 20 people. It's high-speed internet. It works well. That's what the fire station uses. That's what all of us are using. And so to have another tower right there, I mean, if SDN wants to put it, they just need to find a better place. They had a better place up on the hill, up on the ridge where nobody could see it. But unfortunately, those two landowners wouldn't allow the easement. And so, but I think based on everything you've heard, you know, they just need to keep looking. They need to find a better spot.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you, sir. Next, we have Kent Prismus. Did I destroy that too?
You're close. Anything close on that last name is just fine. Kent Prismus. I also am a landowner. I owned, I own property of probably about 150 feet to the north of the where the proposed tower is, 22619 North Rochford Road. I bought this property about three years ago with the intent, it has a small cabin on it, with the intent of building a home on it. Since I purchased it, I have upgraded by putting in a brand-new septic system and a brand-new well the last couple of years. I'm currently working with a contractor to put a house on my property here, hopefully in the near future. I did send an email regarding my concerns as well, and I'll kind of briefly go over it. But first of all, I'd like to state that I, I'd agree with what Mr. Wolfe and McRae had stated on this, with one exception. I believe the setback is actually 500 feet, not 300 feet. And the, the tower being proposed is about 100 to 125 feet from the property line to the best of my estimation, about 150 feet from where my house would be at, where my current cabin is. The, as also stated, it's within the fall zone of a couple of properties. And there's also a power line to the east of this that would be in the fall zone as well. The, you know, the proposed site, the one thing we haven't talked about is I did some research on the potential health concerns for the RF radiation on these towers. And I know that that's, can be somewhat controversial if there is concerns or aren't concerns. But there is data that, that says that there, there can be concerns for closer proximity to these towers. As well as that goes, I have no intention at this point in time of selling my property. However, when you invest in property, you also invest in, it's an investment. And I've done some research on what the proximity of a tower does on your, on your property values. And the closer a tower is to your property, the higher the percentage is of depreciation of your property values. I've also spoken directly to the Realtor that I brought my property from, and she has hard firsthand data of how difficult it is to resell a property that has a cellphone tower close to it. So, so those are all great concerns. And then, you know, the, the public perception of that tower and the health issues, whether there are, aren't any, I'm not an expert on that. But then also just the, the close proximity where it changes the aesthetics of the area. It's been talked about the historical value of Rochford or historical aspect of Rochford. And if you see the pictures, and I provided some pictures in my email that I took last week, and one is a screenshot of a street view. This hillside is very apparent when you drive up North Rochford Road or for that point, pretty much anywhere in Rochford. If you look off to the north or the northwest, this hillside is right there. And this tower is just going to be boom right, right there without a doubt. One thing I didn't put in my email is, I'm not sure exactly where the access to this tower would be. But I believe that, that one thought is to go up through an alley or easement that is my driveway to my property, which would actually be impinging upon my property as well. So that's also a concern that I would have service trucks and, and things going up through my property. It's been stated about it. It's my understanding, it's a paid service, high-speed internet, which has already been talked about. I have, again, I have CenturyLink. It works fine. I can, I can do Zoom meetings. I can stream live from it. And I also get internet cellphone coverage on it. And we, Verizon Booster gives excellent Verizon coverage as well. So it seems redundant for the purpose of putting up such a, an ISO in such a beautiful area.
Thank you, Kent. Appreciate it. I just want to acknowledge to everybody outside the audience that we do, in our packages, the letters that were sent in are also in there. So we, we received that muscle.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And next speaker request form is from Aaron I. Am I getting any of these right today?
I own the property with the mobile home with wood siding.
Okay. Aaron, just identify yourself for the records and.
Oh, I'm Aaron I. And I own that property right there. We've had the property since probably 1965. We put that dwelling there in probably 1990s. And everybody's covered everything. I wanted to say pretty much it's going to be an ISO and kind of a hazard to my building. I think it's going to look like an ICBM launch tower or something because they're going to have chain link around it. They're going to have to do a lot of dirt work. It could be erosion, you know. That's all I got to say. It'll be an ISO.
Okay. Thanks, Aaron. Final comment would be from the agent, Stephen Igoff. I'm going to mess it up. Can you respond to some of the comments that were made?
I have some basic comments, I guess.
Steve, one thing I, I'd like some clarification on. When Ron first came up on, on the dais, he says you guys approached him with the letters. Is that?
Yeah, that's correct. So we attempted to deal with five other property owners, one of which is sitting right there.
Okay.
And we looked at his property. It was too steep. The original plan was the document that your director brought up was one that was submitted to the USDA. This is a grant program from the federal government to build these, bring broadband where there is a broadband. That's the goal, high-speed internet. The original plan was to go up on the hill there. But we could not get any easements to get there, bring the fiber in, to bring the fiber to the tower. The property owners wouldn't give it to us. So we approached several other property owners in different areas, like I said, six of them, and had issues with all the different properties. And, and at that point, I was kind of working with the fire chief to say, is there anybody else in town? You know, and he, he recommended talking to Ron, because Ron had a property there. So I called Ron and, and we visited about it. And, you know, we came up with this location and, as I did, that's probably the best location to put a tower, up against the back of a hill. I mean, everything behind it's 100 to feet high of hillside. There's only one lot to the north that has residential property and then nothing to the west. So the problem with the 500-foot variance is you draw a house, a 500-foot circle around any of these homes, and there's no place to put a tower. So the variance makes it impossible to put a tower on non-Forest Service land. And the Forest Service requires us to go through this process. They're really talking to us about going on their land. So here we are. The CenturyLink product is not considered high-speed internet by the FCC. Doesn't meet the rules. That's why we're here. We were given the money to do this. So while they did bring DSO in, that doesn't count in the, in the real world anymore. Our goal is to give a lot higher speeds than that, 500, 600 maybe, up and down versus 10, 12, 25, that CenturyLink does. So any other questions?
I'll, I'll.
I mean, it was a federal grant that's supported. The document should be in the file now. For some reason, they disappeared in the last week. From whenever you see it, a letter from Kristi Noem in there, a letter from Johnson, Congressman. I mean, there's tons of support for this project. The sheriff's got a letter in there.
So Steve, one comment is, someone said this is going to be a cellphone tower, cellphone tower. Do you have, the surface in the hills is pretty spotty. So is that part of the plan for this?
Yeah. So SDN has partnered this grant program, is putting 11 towers up, one in Rochford, Silver City and Nemo, and then additional eight up and down 385 to improve, to number one reason is to improve public safety.
Okay.
All the cell tower providers who are customers of SDN, Verizon, AT&amp;T and Sprint have been contacted and given that list. And they are in the process of deciding. All of them have stopped structuring in the hills because of this, so that they can move to these towers. Do we have contracts with them yet? No, because the tower, they won't send a contract with you to have a tower. So chicken and egg issue there. So the goal of all those towers is to put cell services on.
Okay, Steve. I'm going to go to the commission for questions.
So Steve, you said there was an option to go on to Forest Service land if this was denied?
No. There was, there was a original location on Forest Service land, but the property, so to get to Forest Service land, I had to go through private property. And I had to run an underground cable to that location. And the property owners denied the request for that easement, the public property owners. So I was not, I couldn't get to the location on the Forest Service land that I wanted to.
So this is Forest Service grant? Is it?
No, it's USDA.
So do they have the same requirements as the Forest Service basically through the state?
I don't, I don't understand what you're asking. Sorry.
Why I'm saying that is they have on their third, they have like 11 things that you have to adhere to for Forest Service in regards to SDN communications requests. One of it is to adhere to the, adhere to the setback requirements along the posted boundary between national forest system lands and private property. So is that why also maybe Brittany that you guys denied, not only because of suburban residential, but the setbacks?
Not from the Forest Service.
Yeah, it was the easements to get to the Forest Service land that the property owners wouldn't.
The private property owner easement that we weren't, weren't granted. The Forest Service was fine with the location.
I got that. What I'm saying is that they didn't have, you don't have the easements to get to Forest Service either, meaning that's why you didn't put it on Forest Service because they're in an agreement if you have the setbacks and you follow their rules and regulations. But you can't follow them because you need an easement and you'd like it right here. So you're going to put it on, if it's Commissioner Roskine's land instead of Forest Service because he gave you the easements?
Well, he's given, so there's a, there's a natural easement if you look at the map. That 15-foot gap, 16-foot actually, is a nat, is an already legal easement for telecommunications, water and electrical. So I don't need an easement to get to his property. Now, when I was going up the hill prior, I needed an easement because crossing private property to get to that location. And that private property owner did not want to give me an easement.
So Stephen, is there any other place you can put this where this tower would work and not be so close to private property?
So I don't know how familiar you are with that area of the county, but there's a creek that comes through there, Rapid Creek. Anything south of that creek, I can't build on because there's no bridge that would support me getting to that location. So that really limits my options. And then you draw a 500 circle around every home and I'm out of options.
So you knew the planning director basically denied this. Did they offer you a different place? Did they say there was a better place that you could put this that would conform basically to the setbacks and the things that you needed for this tower?
No. And I could receive that denial on Friday, so.
Jason, do we have any other options for Stephen to put this tower where it would work out of residential?
We didn't actually have a sit-down meeting to discuss opt, discuss options. The request came in and I evaluated it based on what they were asking for. During my site visit, I did notice there was accessible land, it's Forest Service land behind the fire department up there. I don't know if that would be suitable or not, but it certainly seems like it'd be reasonable as far as topography and access goes.
For me, if you can find a different option for this.
This was number six for the record.
Right. Did you check where Jason was saying?
Excuse me?
Did you check where Jason was suggesting?
No, I didn't even, I was introduced to him by Tudema a week ago. And he was going to go out and do this report. And he tried to call me and I tried to call him back and forth. And believe it or not, we did not have cell service to talk to each other.
So Jason, here's, here's something. Have we had cell towers in suburban residential? Have we accepted that as a commission before? Do you know that?
No. The, the most recent one was the one at Three Forks, and we required that easement around that, a no-build easement around that cell tower so that there wouldn't be residences built or structures constructed.
So we have no other area in Pennington County that we have constructed in any suburban residential?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
So this, just to comment on that, if, if I can.
Yes, sir.
It's a very common practice. If you drive north on 90, there's one 12 feet from a house, right off the interstate, and one next to that, 15 feet from a house, you know, trailer park, still or not. So this isn't something new in the industry at all. It's very common.
Are you familiar with what he's talking about?
I submitted pictures of that to them.
Only by the photographs that he submitted. And that's within the city limits. I don't know what their requirements are.
But not in Pennington County?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Does any other commissioner have a question?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lester.
I just want to confirm. And, and you know, there's a reason why we have some of these setbacks for towers. And I get it, these towers are pretty sturdy. It's, I'm not sure I've ever seen one fall over and, and cause damage. However, there's a reason why we have the setbacks we established on some of these things, just in case some kind of traumatic event happens and causes them to fall over. I mean, even, even if it was 1.1 the height of it, I could maybe, maybe consider that. But you're, you're talking two structures that I see. And, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, those were both inhabited structures, right, Jason? Those two structures are within the fall?
I'm unsure about the mobile home here, but I know this one is.
Okay, but that mobile home could be, correct. All right. So you got two inhabited structure, or structures that could be inhabited that are in that fall area. And that, and that's probably my biggest concern. And I'm just going to ask a question if you don't mind. Looking at that map, if you go left of where the cell tower is on that map, why can't you push it all the way back to the back end of that property line? And, and I'm just asking because I'm not familiar with that particular piece of property and that's topography.
Straight up and down.
Okay.
Not buildable.
Okay.
That answers my question.
Chairman, one more thing.
I'm going to check with Gary. Gary, did you have any comments?
I, I, I don't really. Thank you.
Okay. Can I make one comment, Deb? The way I view this from EMS point of view and, and what happened a couple of summers ago, and that's why no one pushed on, on a lot of this stuff, is the need for it. But I think, right now, I think our options are staff's recommend denial. We can approve it with a variance, or we can continue to another week to find some other options, to see if there's some other options. I just wanted to put that out there. Ms. Haggar.
Chairman, I, I believe that we need broadband. I believe we need towers in Pennington County. I'm all for that. It's just, like I said, it's not been, in Pennington County where it's by housing or suburban, Jason has made that clear, maybe in the city. But in Pennington County, we're looking for a little bit different for, and people have been asking, can you, I'm sorry, I'm getting a migraine. So if I sound like I'm slow today, it's probably because I have a headache. So I apologize. Bottom line is, this hasn't been in Pennington County before in suburban residential. There's a reason for it. This tower might not fall. But it's something well-needed in Pennington County. But for me, I'm going to say no, just because it hasn't happened before in suburban and that I think we'd find a better option to get this done, to make this happen for Pennington County.
Any further discussion? I, I'll make one comment. I'll, I'll make a motion. I'd make a motion to continue this to the next commission meeting. That gives us time for staff to work with the applicant to see if there is other options or if there's any site visits that need to be done.
Okay.
So motion's been made by LaCrosse, second by Haggar, to continue to the next commission meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So we continue to the next meeting to give you a chance to work with staff.
Chairman, I'm gonna get, stay in the back for a few minutes. I got a strobe light on my eye. I have a migraine right now. So I apologize to the audience.
Next, we come up to item C, variance VA 20-04 Diamond Spur Lodge LLC, Diamond Spur Properties LLC. Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Malo.
Good morning Commissioners, Brittany Moller, Planning Director. Item C is variance VA 21, or 22 dash 04 to exceed the required distance from 200 feet to 500 feet for 36 off street parking spaces for an event center in a highway service district. The applicant is Diamond Spur Lodge LLC, Andrew and Alicia Edson. And I do believe Alicia is on Zoom if you have any questions for her. The agent is Jeffrey Crocker, K L J Engineering. The property is located on the southeast corner, the intersection of Highway 385 and Mill Iron Drive near the Three Forks area. This parking area is for an event center. This event center required a conditional use permit. And the conditional use permit for this event center was approved by the Planning Commission on March 28th, 2022. And when staff considers a variance, we look at a two-pronged approach. The first is whether granting the variance runs counter to the public interest. And I'm just going to read the answers. No, the proposed development of an event center and parking area in this location is complementary to the surrounding land uses and structures. Number two, the surrounding neighborhood existing established commercial uses that, or have established commercial uses that utilize large parking areas. Yes, Highway Service District allows an event center with an approved conditional use permit, which they have obtained. Um, yes, does it conform to the comprehensive plan? Highway Service District does allow an event center with an approved conditional use permit. And no, it does not harm the public safety, health or general welfare as the proposed use and parking area consistent with the area. Prong two, whether a special condition exists to grant a variance. Staff does believe that a special condition does exist. The eastern edge of the property slopes steeply towards Spring Creek and is a flood hazard area. The intent is to keep the building and parking lot away from this slope and flood area while also maintaining a large area of natural permeable, permeable landscaping for stormwater control. And if a special condition exists, does enforcing the ordinance create an unnecessary hardship? Yes, due to the creek and narrowness of the property, there's not enough land area available to provide for full parking capacity and maintain adequate stormwater controls. And finally, if a special circumstance exists, does granting the variance observe the ordinance spirit while doing substantial justice? And staff believes yes, the necessary parking is still being provided on the lot near the event center while helping to preserve pervious area for stormwater control. This was routed around through the interdepartmental review process. The Highway Department did state that there was a concern that pedestrians would utilize Mill Iron Drive as a means of access to get to the property as there is no sidewalk available for use since the lot is not adjoining to the event center. An approach from it must be filed with the Highway Department. Now I'll give you just overview of where that parking area is. I did talk to the staff's agent and there is adequate area within the right of way to construct the sidewalk along that lot 7R to maintain that. In addition, these applicants have indicated that this is going to be an overflow lot and used for valet parking. So they're hoping that that would minimize the amount of pedestrian traffic that would be along that right of way on the sidewalk. Again, a conditional use permit for the event center was approved by the Planning Commission on March 28th. And the applicants are currently in the planning process to combine these three lots into one lot. And that will be heard at a later time at this meeting. So with that, staff is recommending approval of this variance with three conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Brittany.
I'll go ahead and move to approve variance VA 22 dash 04 with three conditions. As the proposed development and use and parking are considered within the area.
We need to table. Got to table it until we have four votes.
Got nobody. Okay, I'm not going to accept the motion at this time. Uh, we lost Gary on.
Oh, we lost Gary?
We lost Gary and we've lost Deb, so we don't have enough people to vote.
Right. I thought Gary's on.
We just dropped, we just dropped off, so we're trying to get him back online.
Okay.
If we can get him back online. So just so the applicants know what happened is you got to have a super majority to pass. And this comes with a recommendation for approval, so I really don't see no problems with it. But we're going to have to table this. And what that means is we'll set it on the table and then as soon as we get enough people back on, we need at least four commissioners. We'll, we'll go back into Board of Adjustments and take it up. So at this point in time, I'd look for a motion to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd move to table this item.
It's been moved and seconded to table.
Followed.
And discussion, Mr. Laster.
Are there speakers who have speaker request forms on this item?
Here's Deb.
Yes, we do.
We do, okay.
Hold on, we may not have to. Ms. Hancock just came back. Ms. Hancock, we are on variance, item number C, variance 2204. I know you've looked at your agenda. This is the, the parking lot proposal. Uh, staff recommends approval.
That'd be my motion?
I, I need to read through all my tabling motion.
Yep.
Apologize, I just needed to take some ibuprofen.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Motion maker on the table and Ms. Laster withdraws his motion. Is that okay with the secondary drawn? And then we got a motion to approval from Hancock, seconded by Mr. Roskinek.
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, we do have a speaker's request form. Do you want to speak or you want to go for the vote? That's what I thought, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll recognize Mr. Laster.
I, I just have one question. You know, I spoke to the, the applicant on this, at least I believe it was applicant or someone representing the applicant on this. I just have one final question about that secondary parking lot, if, if they would be interested in answering that question.
Would Rich be able to answer that, who wanted to speak?
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to answer. I'm on, this is Alicia Edson.
Oh, there you go, Alicia.
Hi Alicia, this is Travis here. We talked about this the other day and I appreciate you reaching out to me for it. And I think you answered all my questions. The only one that I have left that, after seeing the concerns about individuals walking up and down there. I know you, you want to use this as your valet parking. But what's, how are you going to prevent individuals from just pulling in there and parking and then walking down the road to that venue? Just, just, I, that's one question I want to know about.
Absolutely. So based on market research and kind of initial inquiries that we've had, we're really projecting probably 90 to 95% of our events to be within that probably 150 to 175 range. For larger events, in addition to the sidewalk, as we mentioned, we really are intending it to be a valet parking lot. So where our events exceed the 200 that we would need to use that lot, we would start to valet, park those cars immediately to first fill that overflow lot. And so in the event that someone refused to have their car valeted, there will be no cost. That will be in, that'll either be covered by the events as we have them or in the contract of the, of who's renting the event. But if they just don't want to have it, then they can start to fill the parking lot that's right there. And so that's kind of our plan is that we'll really start with valet to try to get that filled first and then move towards the building.
All right, thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Look for a motion to come out of Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I would look for a motion to take a 10 minute break.
Good, thank you.
That'd be my motion, seconded by Roskinek.
All right, we're seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, welcome. Everybody, we're going to come back into session and we want to welcome Mr. Drews back.
Thank you.
He told me I have to finish running, finish what I started, so that's what I'm going to do. So I'd look for a motion to take up the items that we put back behind. Be items 21, A through E, and item 22, A through B. And then public comment number 23 is what we moved back. So I'd look for a motion to take those items up.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Hancock. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So next we come up to items from Highway Department. And I'll recognize Joe.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe. Well, actually it's afternoon now, isn't it? Usually it's morning by the time I'm up here. So item A, let's see, let me get over here. Authorization to purchase ground stabilizer, so off of the Harding County bid. We actually went out to bid for this when we bid our annual supplies, but the bidder didn't, or this company didn't bid on that. They did put a bid in for Harding County, so we're asking for authorization to purchase the ground stabilizer off of Harding County's bid.
Chairman.
Mrs. Hancock.
Motion is to request the Highway Department to purchase ground stabilizer from Team Lab Chemical Corporation, Bismarck, North Dakota, utilizing the Harding County, South Dakota bid award on December 7th, 2021.
Moved, moved by Hancock, seconded by Roskinek. Any discussion from public or commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, item B.
Item B, so this is for our 2022 bridging grant, bridge improvement grants that we were awarded by the state. For 2022, I just want to give a little background. We applied for six bridges, four of which that we are doing preservation on and two are reconstruction grants. The state actually had some additional funding to put in to their pot for the big grants this year. Typically, they award about $15 million worth of grants. This year it was $23 million. And we were awarded all six bridges that we, we applied for. So in 2021 and 2022, we've received almost 2.1, a little over $2.1 million in grant funding. Without the grant funding, these projects would have cost us $3.1 million. So instead of the $3.1 million, it's going to cost us a little over $1 million for the seven bridges that we've got bridge improvement grants for. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any questions from the commission?
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Motion to request to approve bridge improvement grant agreements for projects, project numbers. BRO 805 0022 dash 6. Do I have to read all those numbers?
You want me to finish him?
Uh, go ahead.
08XE, structure 52 dash 3, 17 dash 3, team bro, BRO 805 20 00 22 dash 5, PCNO XXD, structure F2 dash 246 299, 298, sorry, BRF 66 by 4 00 22 dash 1, PCN 08WL, uh, structure F52 dash 395 367, uh, BRF 6220 00 22 dash 2, PCN 08WM, structure 47 dash 420, BRF 6121 00 223, PCN 08WN, and structure 52 dash 68 dash 295, which BRF 6121 00 22 dash 4, PCN 08W2, structure 52 dash 608 298. And that's Ms. Hancock's motion.
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roskinek. Any discussion from public or commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, item C.
Item C, this is for the transportation planning process that we are trying to proceed with, with the Rapid City MPO. This is in lieu of the Raze Grant that we have applied for three times, I believe, and been denied. The Raze Grant is a federal grant that we've tried to apply for, for Highway 14 and Highway, Highway 14 16 and Radar Hill Road. What this corridor study will do is, is get us to about a 25 to 30% design. It'll come up with a, basically a cross section or a typical section for the, the two roads, how the design may look. Some of you may be familiar with the corridor study that's been taking place on Highway 16. I think they're starting to wrap that up, but this will be very similar to that and take the public's input into, into account. So this agreement is for our share and to commit the funds for our 18, our hour half of the 18.05% match. I believe Box Elder's agreement is on their agenda for tonight at their city council. I don't know if Box Elder's still here. Doesn't look like it. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Miss, uh, recognize Mr. Laster.
Joe, we've talked about a temporary fix there and you and I talked about that a little bit earlier. And the state recommended against that. Is there going to be any kind of temporary fix to relieve any of that traffic during this study timeframe? Or is that going to be even looked at during the study? Or is this solely for that entire 14 16 Radar Hill road issues out there?
Well, I'll correct the first statement. The, the state didn't recommend against or for it. They just did not want to provide the engineering document, or the engineering decision. They told us to go hire a, or an independent engineer.
Okay.
So to do the design on it. They just, they didn't want to commit to that one way or the other. But this will take into the account the entire corridor, not just that intersection.
Okay.
So. Can I answer questions?
Yep.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Motion to request approval of agreement with City Rapid City for accomplishing the Rapid City area transportation planning process to allow for a corridor study for Highway 14 16 Radar Hill Road with a maximum limiting amount of $18,050 from Pennington County.
Second.
Moved by Hancock, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion from public or commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item D.
Item D is a utility relocation agreement. We did this very similar agreement with Sheridan Lake Road with Black Hills Electric Co-op. Basically what this agreement is, is some of the electric lines are within the, the current right of way. Some of them are on private easements. So when we realign according to, realign a road according to state statute, anything that is in the public right of way that public entity has, I believe it's 45 or 90 days to move their, their lines. Since some of this lies outside and then the county doesn't have to pay for that portion that's in the right of way. But since we're realigning and moving, causing them to move their stuff that's on private already, we have to pay for that stuff that's on private easements. So that's where this agreement is stemming from. Black Hills Electric Co-op hopes to get their stuff moved this summer. We are very close or moving closer every day to getting this, this South Rochford Road project to a bid letting here September of, or October of this year, so.
Thanks Joe. Any discussion from board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinek.
I'll move to approve utility relocation agreement with Black Hills Electric Cooperative Inc. And in preparation for the South Rochford Road reconstruction project, P6403 dash 10, PCNO 8P3 in a not to exceed amount of 165,000.
Second.
Motion made by Roskinek, seconded by Hancock. Any further discussion from public or commission? I just got one comment. It's good to see stuff coming up on our agenda for Rochford Road that we know it's moving forward, so that's a plus.
It's slowly but surely, we did finally get our final easement from the, the tribes on pest law. So the county's private right of way is officially wrapped up. And the, the state has sent over things to the federal government for their recertification of the environmental assessment. So we're hopeful that we will succeed in getting that thing to bid here September, October of this year, so.
That's good, thanks Joe. Okay, there's been a motion for approval. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item E.
Item E, so on the, the exact opposite end of the project, we're in the, we're in the final season of Sheridan Lake Road. With that being said, we need to reset all the property corners and all the monumentation on the Forest Service and the private parcels. So we've chosen to get Ferber on board or get a proposal from them to set the monuments on the property corners and the section line corners and the quarter corners. Basically do all this final survey after the road project is finished this, this August. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions from the commission?
Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Drews.
Any idea how many markers there needs to be?
I believe it was about 140 to 160, I believe, right Sean? Was it? That's the number that six of mine had, but I don't remember. It's, it's a ton. Sean says closer to 400, so. Let's say, I mean, if you think about it, it's all the property from Alberta Drive all the way to 385. So we wipe. all the way to 385, so we wiped out quite a few property corners and, and whatnot along the way, so.
Do you have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve. Move to approve the agreement for services with Ferber Engineering Company, Inc. to establish a record right of way monumentum, men- monumentation for Sheridan Lake Road and not to exceed the amount of $29,000.
Move by Drews, seconded by Ross Connect. Any further discussion from public or commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks you, Joe. Next on our agenda is 22 items from Human Resources, and this is going to be, excuse me, the compensation presentation.
John Morrell, Pennington County, Human Resources. So Joan is pulling this up for us, and I want to preface the, the presentation, I guess, by the discussion about the fact that the department heads and elected officials as a group have worked extensively to, to try to find solutions for compensation, or to address compensation challenges for our employees in the county. This is the first step, the things we're going to discuss today. We'll come back on April 19th and, and do another bit of a presentation where we address the pay scale and some of the other options that we'd like to have considered moving forward into the new year. So I'll move over here and, and we'll go through the slides rather quickly, maybe. Okay. So the things we're going to talk about are some of the, the data points that are important to understand with regard to our current employee populace. Turnover data, training, employment cost, importance of pay, how that fits into the, the big picture, if you will, with regard to our, our folks. The change in community conditions, and this is the, the thing that's driving the things that we're experiencing, so it's driving turnover, it's driving satisfaction, if you will, with pay, it's driving our need to actually address some of the, the pay issues that we're currently experiencing. These are the most frequent positions that we seem to be filling on an ongoing basis. So when we look at the last year, the last two years, dispatchers or telecommunicators, and again, we recognize that group here today, the, the importance is again, very evident. Appraisers within the equalization office, so again, a big discussion. Our journeyman apprentice, maintenance workers within the Highway Department, public defenders within the sheriff's office as well, deputy sheriffs, correctional officers are the most common that we see. State's Attorney's Office, again, the deputy state's attorney, legal secretaries, and then within the treasurer's office, the tax and title assistant. It's not that we're not losing people out of other offices, but these are the ones that seem to be most repetitive and also can create severe headaches, if you will, for the county operation and for the citizens that live here. This data is just over the last few years, so you'll take a look at the information on the administrative side, so the non-sheriff office divisions, and you'll say, well, 5% looks great, 14 is even reasonable, but when you consider that we've tripled our turnover rates in the last few years, it's problematic. Again, when you take a look at the number of employees and you figure there's only about 370 to 380 administrative employees, and we're losing over 50 of those on an annual basis now, or we're estimating that for this year. It's a big change and a big challenge. Within the sheriff's office, I would say again, the same thing that we've noticed over the last few years, and I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that I believe some of the things that we've done to address that are reflective in the, the reduced turnover rate that we're estimating for this year. So we've made some changes in compensation, we've got a new scale, we've got the overtime that's been increased, but those types of things we've done over there has helped reduce. Now, a 21% turnover within the sheriff's office is still a, a big number. Now, it's not something that we're happy with, but it does indicate that there are ways to, to work to improve the turnover, and we're asking for these to be considered today. Training costs are those that we pay on average for replacing one person in the positions listed. So within the dispatch position within, again, the dispatch under, under ESCC, about $57,000 it costs to train a new dispatcher coming into that office. Appraisers, again, because they're actually able to do work while they're training, it's a little bit different process. You see a reduced amount there. But when you look at what's happening, even within the tax and title position within the treasurer's office, and you're looking at almost $52,000 to train a new tax and title person, these numbers add up quite quickly. To be able to maintain our operation, provide the services that we need to, and provide satisfaction within the employee rings by being fully staffed and fully trained, it's critical that we have these positions filled and that we address the challenges. Here's the training cost. So when you look at this chart, that 4 million is a big number, but I want you to understand a couple of things. The deputy sheriff experienced and knew those numbers of 13 and 12 are just for one year. The other positions that I've got there are for the last two years and a little bit, but over $4 million. Now, if you could add another million and a half or two more years for the sheriff's office, you're looking at over $7 million just in training costs to be able to replace those people and get them up to speed so that they're actually able to function in their roles. So you're going to keep that number in mind, even if it's just the $4 million that I have shown here, and when we take a look at what our ask is with regard to the employees and compensation things, we think will help. How important is pay? You'll see on here it's listed number five. In most surveys, you'll see compensation comes in anywhere's between three and seven. So the dollar signs are important. They're important, but they're only in relativity, if you don't have those other pieces, compensation is the only thing that will make a person decide to come to your office or to not. We have the benefit of having great retirement. We have things that help us with medical and healthcare, those types of things. There's things that we need to improve on in all of those categories. Compensation is the one that stands out. It's the most noticeable, and again, it's the one that people will look to or leave because of if it's not existing. If you're paying fair, the rest of the things you can work through. If your pay is not competitive with the marketplace, it becomes the big thing. This was from a presentation done by PayScale, which is a compensation firm that does surveys all around the world. And I would agree with this. The greatest challenges we're finding from an HR perspective this year, recruiting, which is proving to be extremely challenging, retention, which is again, even more challenging than you might expect, and we'll see that when we look at the turnover slide, and then compensation. Compensation, again, is the cornerstone of these pieces. If we don't have that piece, then the other ones will actually worsen as time goes on. Here's what we're seeing from a community competitive network, if you will, or competitive market for the folks that we're trying to recruit. State of South Dakota raised their wages last year, the year before, and what's interesting about South Dakota last year is they raised them because they went to a completely new pay scale by up to 15% for some of their employees. Again, significant increases on our side of the things, and we take a look at that. We did it roughly here, 2.5 to 3% overall. City of Rapid City did the same thing, 2020, 2021, they're again looking to raise wages, and these are for the non-law enforcement positions, the administrative types of positions within the city. The law enforcement's raises have been significantly higher, and they've actually projected those increases for the next three to four years with the contract discussions that they've gone through. Pennington County is not alone in what we're facing with regard to compensation challenges. If you're not aware, this past week, actually, or it was been the week before now, Minnehaha County actually approved a 7% scale adjustment for all employees. There's additional compensation for the law enforcement, again, based upon the contracts they have. This is on top of the, the 3% to 5% that they had already granted for this year. So they're doing another 7% just to be able to recruit and to retain the people that they have. Our goal isn't to keep up with inflation. It sounds like that's the case. We work on a cost of labor, not a cost of living type of model. The cost of labor means what does a labor market actually require you to offer in order to recruit and retain employees? It usually differs considerably from the cost of inflation. Very few employers, very few, are able to do a cost of inflation. And then actually, in cases where you have a negative inflation or recessionary pressures, you don't take money away from your employees. It's based on the cost of labor in that market that you're doing business. The vendor that did our, our original wage study here about two and a half years ago provided some information for us. Across the state, they were seeing increases of 3% to 3.5% for employee wages this year. In the Rapid City area, however, specifically to this area, they're seeing wage pressures, again, of 6.5% to 7.3% just for those employers in our market area. This is what they've had to adjust in order to be able to recruit and retain employees. You'll see retailers, Target announced that they're going to start paying up to $24 an hour for some entry level positions. McDonald's and other employers in the area are paying a minimum 15 and actually starting people at higher rates. When we look at our scale, then we're sub $11 for some of the entry level positions we have within the county, and we'll address that at the meeting on the 19th. But we have to be considered competitive in order to retain and to also attract any new candidates. Scott from Natural Resources will tell you that we've been recruiting for over a month now for some of this summer seasonal help. There's been hundreds, I mean, of hundreds of people that have looked at those postings, and we haven't had a single person apply. This is the first time since I've been here, this is my fifth year now, that we haven't had any applicants. It, it's really a, a very odd situation. So again, some community conditions that are important to understand. We look at the unemployment rate, just in the Rapid City area, over the course of last year, it dropped from 3.4% to 2.6. Job openings in the Rapid City area, almost 8,000. People that are available to fill those openings, slightly under 1,500. And I'll say that again, almost 8,000 openings just in this area, and less than 1,500 people that are available to work. It makes it much more important for us to be able to, to be seen as being competitive so that we can actually recruit and not only recruit, but retain the folks that we do have. That's almost six jobs per person that are able to work. So employed but willing to, to change jobs, and this number is frightening. We're seeing some folks that are going to other positions with other employers because they can make better pay and work fewer hours. There's currently almost 5,500 people, this is done by a survey by the State Department of Labor, there's almost 5,500 people that are currently employed in this area. They're saying, yep, you know what, you give me something better, I'm out of here, I'm ready to go. That makes me very nervous, so. Additional community conditions. The top paragraph here under national and U.S. statutes is important. There's been over 4 million people a month for probably the last 10 to 12 months now that have left. They've just left their position. This is more than double what it was about 10 years ago. It was right around 2% was the normal percent of employees you'd see, and you're seeing this now up over, or excuse me, 2 million people roughly a month about 10 years ago, and now you're seeing almost 4.5 million a month that are leaving their current positions for other roles or just deciding that they're going to just take a break. What caused this? COVID actually led to most of it initially. What people had realized, however, is that when they were able to work from home or had other options with regard to elder care or childcare, or, or just the flexibility of their work schedules so they could have a, a more of a life-work balance, I said that intentionally backwards, not work-life, they're looking at their lives now as being the primary concern, and work being the piece that helps them make that possible. Also, in the last two years, it's estimated through the federal Bureau Labor Statistics that there's been about 5 million people that are 55 or older that completely just dropped out of the workforce. They've taken early retirement, they found other kind of gig jobs or side jobs or part-time employment that has removed them from the workforce. A lot of experience, a lot of knowledge that has disappeared when those groups have left. What does it mean for us? Again, nearly 45% of the current employees in any entity are looking to leave. It's imperative that we find a way of attracting new employees, that I think even more importantly, find a way to retain the folks we have and show them that it, it matters to us. We have to make a difference, and we have to be able to recognize and reward them for their commitment, if you will, to the county. So again, PayScale was the, the survey I was on here two weeks ago, or the webinar. On average, the highest percentages of, of increases, so this is between 5% and 6% increase in wages, was being done by about 19% of the employers that they had surveyed. It's not saying this is what we're doing or what they're doing here in the state, this is across the, the nation, but on average, they're seeing between 5 and 6%. And then there's quite a few that are higher. Those don't seem reasonable, especially when I look at the more than 30% or off, or more than 30% wage increases, and that large employers with 50,000 employers or more, there's about 12% of those groups that are giving more than a 30% increase. That's unrealistic. It, it's not something that they can continue to offer. But 5% to 6% seems to be reasonable based upon what we're seeing anyway. What the ask is for this, and this is again to reward current employees that have been here for a, a longer period of time. So the ask today is to consider some compression adjustments for longer-term employees. I'm going to talk about two pieces of this. One is the, the presentation here, then I've got a side piece that I want to address with you as well, if you'll allow me. But we're asking though, for employees who have achieved or will achieve at least four years of employment with the county during this year, 2022, but have less than eight years, that they'd receive one additional pay step to reward them again for their longevity and to help reduce some of the compression challenges that we've seen because of the, the wave we've seen, if you will, and how compensations have been handled over the last five to eight years. Employees who achieve at least eight years of employment in 2022 would receive two additional pay steps. To do this, it would cost about $300,000, $310,000 in 2022, and that information would be on the next page. Keep in mind, this would exclude and exploit employees, excuse me, who have already been adjusted by their department head or elected officials. So some of the exceptions that you've already granted as a board, those employees have already been adjusted. They would not receive this in addition to what they've already received. This one also, as I take a look at it, I, I put this in here to reinforce the length of time people have been with us. Three years or less is almost half of our employees at this point. That's out of balance. Generally, you'll see a higher number of folks in these ranks, or at least in the middle ranks, you get to five years to 10 years, you'll see a, a higher percentage of folks. Your turnover is, is churning at this point when you see almost half of your employees with three years of less of longevity with the county. So what we're trying to do is a number of things. First of all, is again, trying to reward those that have been here to make sure they stay here, and we'll talk about that. Some of the things you've already done, though, elevated starting pay, sign-on or retention bonuses, new department structures, updated job descriptions. It's been really nice to see some of the actions that, that the departments and elected officials have taken, and then that the board has approved for them. We're trying to take care of pay compression with our longer-term folks today, and then when I come back on the 19th, I'm going to talk to you about a potential new pay scale and then other market adjustments that we believe are necessary to make those things work. Here's the cost breakdown by office of what we're estimating these costs will be to grant these steps. So you take a look at that, there's roughly 160 employees that would receive one step, there's about 240 that would receive two out of the current group that we have on staff. These are estimated costs, you've got the wages down the left center column, you have the, the benefit piece, if you will, the retirement, social security, those types of costs that the county has to contribute, and the total overall cost. And again, this could be plus or minus within a few thousand dollars. The reason, because people are coming and going. We may lose some of those longer-term folks. I got a notice this morning of a seven-year employee that has decided to go somewhere else. I hate to see that, but it's the reality of the world that we're working in right now. So next steps, I'll be back to the board again on the 19th to talk about some of the other things. I'm also going to recommend, as we get to that meeting, that we do something with regard to another market, so to give us a better idea, a more accurate idea of the markets that we're completely competing in, so. Any questions about the data? There's a lot of stuff, and I went through very quickly, so I apologize.
Mr.
Gary, go ahead first.
Gary. So John, when I look at the numbers here, the 378, which have less than four years service with us, if we look back prior to COVID, so that's, that's really saying we've got 50% of our employees turning over every four years.
Yes, sir.
So prior to COVID, would that have been a similar story, or is this really bumped up?
No, the, uh, great question, sir, so I apologize for interrupting. What I believe is true, and I don't have the data with me here today to support this, what we had seen in the past, new employees would come and they would stay. what we had seen in the past, new employees would come and they would stay. We would have had some turnover, some departments, the job is just that way, it's tough, and it takes a toll on you pretty quickly. When we look at what's happened in the balance, what I saw before was we had a larger number of people that had been here for five years, ten years, and longer than what we see now. We've lost quite a few of those in the middle bands, so again, from five to ten years that have left, because they found a way to get paid higher than what they were making here, and maybe the job was more conducive for their family balance and their needs of their home life. Those have really magnified, or really jumped, if you will, in the last two years because of the conditions. They lost daycare, they lost places for their elderly to be, some of those places just closed and have never reopened, so they had to find another solution. And what you're saying is, this is the result of that, is the people that are able to find another work have found it, and are continuing to look for it. I don't know that I answered your question, so.
Yeah, you did. One follow-up question on that, John?
Yes, sir.
Do you do interviews with everyone that leaves?
Yes, everybody that leaves voluntarily.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so you've got pretty sound basis of information as to why they're leaving and so forth, okay.
What's been really surprising for us, again, the compensation is something that's always mentioned, but in most cases, it's not the primary reason. We've seen that be listed as a primary reason more recently, and then in a few, we've also seen work flexibility be the primary reason they've left. They've gone to employers that allow them to work an altered schedule, or maybe to work remotely, or maybe they have onsite childcare, those types of things make it easier for those that have had to leave to be able to be working again.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lassner.
I have a couple of questions. One of them's a follow-up to what Gary just asked, and I know I have asked this many times before, I was going to ask about exit surveys, but I think it'd be good for us to be able to have some of those exit surveys and rank out what they've been asking, and I know I've said that a couple of times, but when we're making decisions on some of these things, it would be wise for us to have all that information.
You bet.
Because I find it, I agree, from what I'm hearing, it's not necessarily the pay and compensation, there's a lot of other reasons why individuals leave, whether they got the family support here, they moved from another state, they realized that they didn't have the family support here that they needed for the childcare, so then they end up leaving. And so, there's a lot of different factors out there, and I think we need to have that information before we make a decision to just jump up our pay scale. Not that, I don't think our employees are valuable, because I think all employees are valuable, especially if they're productive. But the second thing to that is, and this is something I noticed whenever we, when you first started here, some of those turnover areas are areas that I've known and worked in, or near, hand-in-hand with a lot of these individuals, not just in the county, but throughout my life in the EMS world, and those areas have always had high turnover.
Sure.
So, I don't know if that gives us a really good picture of some of the stuff that's going on in the county, because some of those particular positions do have high turnover, and you know, I've worked with law enforcement officers in different cities and towns, and most of the ones I've ever worked in, they've had high turnover. The same thing with your nine-one-one dispatchers, or you know, some of the people just can't handle the stress that's involved in some of those career fields, they think they can, and then they get involved, and they can't. So, I think your chart here that kind of gave us an idea of the employee turnover percentage, I'd like to see where we rank, you know, amongst many different counties, you know, the top three counties, you know, whatever the best way we can do it, the bottom three counties, and then see where we fit in there, because I think if we're getting a snapshot of just us, and, and I'm not going to make any assumptions here, but if we're at the top or at the bottom, that might also say, well, we're doing pretty good, or we're doing really bad, one of the two. And so being able to compare with other counties to see where we're at, because oftentimes you do give us other things to compare with, but not in this particular area, and I think I can make a better decision if I have that information.
I agree. I'm not sure where that data might be available, I'll do what we can to try to research that. Yeah, that's not usually something that's published or public, but I'll see if I can reach out to some peers. I know when I talked about our turnover and how the numbers have changed dramatically when many other county, they were experiencing the same types of things we did, that's why they took the action they did two weeks ago. Their turnover numbers have gotten to be unsustainable, and that's my fear here, is not only are we losing seasoned people, we're not attracting new people, we just don't have the ability with the wage rates that we have. No, but I think it's a fair ask, I'll look.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Mr. Haggard.
For me, it's critical, and I think I talked about this last time, to retain the employees we have. We're doing a lot of creative ways for new employees to hire them, but how about the people that have put in their time with Pennington County and be, you know, been with our team for a long time? As you see from the numbers, all the way past ten years, there's a lot of employees, over half, that are dedicated to us. For me, the steps do make a difference. Also, John, if you talk about, there's twenty-one off the scale people, meaning they don't get any steps, I think it's also critical that we give them some type of bonus, or something like that, also to retain them, because you have twenty-one that are past, how many years did we say, John?
Some of those have thirty-five years.
So, that's pretty amazing. So if you're going to give new people to stay, how about the ones that have put in their time past COVID, past all the stress of everything that we have changed in Pennington County in the last couple of years, and said, you know, I'm willing to stay and, and you know, get this done for you. So, that means a lot to me, whether it's here in Pennington County, or it's for my business. So, I've had to be creative in some of my businesses, and the people that have been there for a long time, I really appreciated them. That was a lot of stress on them, you know, the mental health area for COVID was pretty huge for a lot of people. They stayed with us, so for me, if they can absorb some of this into their budgets, it's going to be huge for us for 2022 for retention, and just show appreciation to people that want to stay on our team and be with Pennington County for the future. I think these people have shown us, again, time and time again, they're here to stay, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ron Raskinak.
So the two numbers, I sat down with John a couple of days ago, and we went over this, so there's two numbers that really struck out to me. One is what we pay for training, which is about four million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. I asked him how accurate that was, so we go back to the page before that, and it shows what it costs to train, and a dispatcher, and a praiser, a public, deputy public defender, and John said those numbers actually came right from the department heads.
Yes, sir.
So that's a solid number. If that's a solid number, then I would assume the four million, one thirty-one's a solid number, and if you have seven hundred and ninety employees, that's five thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars per employee. Now if you, I said, what's it going to cost to fix this problem, and I think you said one point seven million.
About one point seven, we get into the other piece of it.
That's two million, or two thousand, one hundred and fifty per employee. So you're saying if we spend one point seven million as an investment, we'll save the difference between that and four point one three one. I mean, that, I look at it like an investment myself.
Yes, sir, so that would be the second piece of the request, so when I come back on the nineteenth, I'll talk about that.
Sure.
One point seven million, that would be the cost of implementing the new pay scale, and then placement on that scale. This piece, again, the reason we're asking for this to be done now, is because we're seeing and hearing about the fact that we're not competitive, and we can't afford to continue to lose those longer-term folks with the experience. Again, we're not seeing applicants. In the case where we may have received for an administrative position, for example, we would have, well, when I got here, so again, just four years ago, it wasn't uncommon for us to receive a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty applications for an admin position. Now if we get fifteen, I feel lucky.
Chairman.
Ron, have you finished?
Yeah, thank you.
Let me make one comment, then I'll go back around. My comment is, is I want to show my, express my appreciation to the department heads, because it was no more than, about a month ago, we were talking about bonuses and stuff, and we gave a challenge that if they come back with something, and we could support, and they found it in their budgets. Majority of what you said, you know, by people, positions that haven't been able to fill, that type of thing, and I think you've gotten some great feedback, so I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, it may take a little while in these last couple of weeks, but they all worked together to come up with this. Mr. Haggard.
So, if we do this today, and even with the off-scale at twenty-one, if we gave them like a thousand dollar bonus, because if the others are getting two between, is it one and a half to two and a half percent?
It ends up, it's one and a quarter percent roughly, or about two percent.
Two and a half.
Again, it varies, if they're getting two steps, it's a little bit more, if it's a single, it's a little less, so.
So that puts us less on the scale at a thousand, for the twenty-one off-scale, less than two percent for them to get somewhat of a bonus or a step in this sense. So if we do this, John, does that cause another issue on the nineteenth for, or does it catch some of that up, or how is this going to make the difference for some of that on the nineteenth?
No, great question, so thank you for that. By doing this now, excuse me, it helps adjust it for those that are longer-term, that, again, would have missed out on things over the course of time because of the actions the board had taken, because the budgets didn't permit for increases in some of those years prior to that, so it helps correct that. So it gives these people some wages now that will be impacted in July. I mean, so June twenty-sixth, I believe, is the first start date of that, that first July pay period. This would be in that check, now they get that at the end of July, but this gives them a half a year of earnings with this additional step. This is comparable to some of the changes that you've already made for newer employees coming in, we just didn't do any adjustments for the longer-term folks, they were kind of forgotten in that process. So this addresses that. The reason this also then doesn't negatively impact them looking at the additional pay scale request we're going to do on the nineteenth, is that that wouldn't take effect until the first pay period of 2023, and that'll apply to all employees. So, your newer employees are benefiting from the changes we've already approved, or the new scales that have been approved. Your longer-term will receive these steps now to help, again, spread them out and to reward them for their service, and then beginning in 2023, if approved, will have the new pay scale again as well.
But you'll have one step and two steps on different people, does that help the compression and some of the stuff we've been talking about?
Yes, yes, most definitely, so it helps push them forward, so they're not near the bottom of the pay scales, and those reflective pay grades that they fall into.
That's what, sorry, John.
No.
And that's what I keep hearing, is, you know, the new ones are starting to come up on them, and they've been here a lot longer, well, you already know what that does, that causes a lot of hard feelings, and then you're going to go look somewhere else where it might be easier, or what we think is fair and just for people that want to put in their business, again, compared to somebody that's just coming in and getting trained. That experienced person for Pennington County in every department is huge to lose. I mean, that's more than even the training we're talking about, because they have years and years of experience beyond that training that we've gave them, you know, for Pennington County. So, for me, I just think it's time we take care of the people that take care of us.
It's the institutional knowledge that you lose with that, and then the morale within the departments that you lose with that, because as soon as some departments are shorthanded, the other folks have to pick it up, and that ends up being quite a burden, especially if it continues for an ongoing basis. The challenge we have again is that recruiting right now is extremely challenging. Again, part of the reason we need to adjust our pay scale is to address some of those recruiting challenges that we're seeing.
And you're right, sorry, John, and you're right, because a lot of the people that have, that fifty percent have been here picking up the slack for others that have been losing two, three, up to five people in their department, so they've been working hard for us.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drew.
I was going to make a motion.
I actually had asked a question before, Deb.
I was just going to talk for a while, just kidding.
Do you have a question?
I do, actually, I just want some clarification. John, you made mention of one point seven million dollars, and maybe I didn't follow that, so is that a new payment schedule or whatnot for the staff that would increase our budget by one point seven, or is this going to have a one point seven million dollar impact?
Both. So, it is a new scale, so I'll be, again, presenting that. I've got to do some more discussions with some of the departments to make sure I'm understanding, we've got all the dots, or the i's dotted, t's crossed, kind of a thing. The information, we've already discussed at our department head and elected official meetings, so I'm pretty comfortable with it. But if we do this piece today, the three hundred thousand, it'll be roughly one point seven thou, or one point seven million more, excuse me, for the new year, we on average have between six hundred and eight hundred thousand in new wage expenses anyway, so this would be adding to the total wage expense based on the new scale and the movement of these employees onto that new scale.
I just want to make sure I heard you. Normally, we have about the six hundred thousand dollar increase.
It this, normally.
Yes. This new plan, if accepted, would increase one point seven million to our budget.
Correct, to get on the scale where we have the competitive ability to hire folks.
The reason why I'm asking that question is because I want to clarify, and I'm going to point this out, our budget, we can only increase it overall three percent, and roughly right now, on an average, based on what our current budget is, that's, I mean, three percent is only one point five million dollars, this already sounds like it's already going to push the max of our budget increase capabilities, because that's what it's going through my head. So I just want, I know you're going to present it, so I just want you to keep that in mind, what's spinning in my head already, if we're going to increase our budget already just in salaries by one point seven million, the rough quick numbers for one percent is five hundred thousand dollar increase, and if we do the full three percent increase in our budget, you're already looking at one point five million, so that's just what's spinning in my head.
I appreciate that, sir, I do. In the discussions with the folks at the meetings, we believe this to be affordable and sustainable, and we'll talk more about that when I do the presentation, but the belief is that this is something the county can afford, and it really needs to afford in order to make sure we can continue operations.
Recognize, recognize Mr. Drew.
I'd make a motion to award pay steps as follows. Employees who achieve at least four years of service in 2022 but less than eight years will receive one additional pay step. Employees who achieve at least eight years of service in 2022 will receive two additional pay steps. Steps will be awarded effective with pay period beginning June twenty-sixth, 2022. Employees who have experienced pay adjustments outside pay policy since January one, 2021, are excluded from receiving any pay steps under this action. Employees no longer on the Gallagher scale are also excluded from this action.
Have a motion.
Second.
A second from Raskinak. Further discussion?
Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Haggard.
Gary, did you include the twenty-one off-scale for a bonus?
I did not.
If I could, Commissioners, I'll address that, once this piece is done, I have another suggested motion to address those twenty-one off the scale.
You done?
I think I've shown my concern with this, and seeing that this three, this three hundred thousand dollars plus what could bring up to one point seven, I'm concerned with that, I kind of want to, trust me, I do believe in rewarding our longer employees, but when I vote no for this, it's not because I don't think you deserve it, it's because I want to know how it's really going to impact our budget, because ultimately, what I could kind of see with the numbers on the wall, is we may not have any room to expand, and we think that we're going to be able to do all this stuff, and then we're going to come back and tell them no. So I'm just concerned about how it's going to play out, so I'd rather have all the information before making that decision.
If I could, Chair, I'm sorry.
John.
I would remind you of this slide, sir. Three hundred thousand dollars for this motion, and one point seven for the additional, is still less than half of what it costs us to train new employees. So again, there's an ongoing expense, and granted, this won't completely erase this, we'll still have some turnover and additional training, but the fact that the ask for the employees at this point is two million dollars, with the understanding it will decrease this, I believe is an investment that will save the county money long-term, versus actually be something that's seen as an expense. So, I don't disagree, I understand your concerns.
We have a motion by Drews, and a second by Raskinak for approval. Any further discussion from public, board?
Wait.
Oh, Stephanie, I recognize Ms. Stephanie.
Thank you. Steph McQuaid, the Sheriff's Office, the Sheriff did ask, I relay just a couple comments in regards to this. One, just our appreciation, you've been very supportive and open to suggestions, and we're communicating that down to the employees, so just thank you. And then the second being, a large chunk of this falls on the Sheriff's Office budget, and you've already approved a lot of changes that we're absorbing this year, there's a lot of unknown with the cost of gas and ammo and everything increasing, so he didn't want to mislead you in guaranteeing that our budget would be able to absorb this at the end of the year, given there are just still some unknowns, so, thank you.
Thank you, Steph. Okay, motion on the floor.
I could, Mr. Chair. So it was brought to my intention that in the original motion, there was the last sentence on there, and I agree, when we started this exercise, included, employees no longer on the scale would also be excluded from the action. I would suggest, if possible, that we change the motion, have a substitute.
Eliminate that sentence.
Yes, and you did eliminate that last sentence, because the next piece I'm going to ask you about actually addresses those that are off the scale.
Is that okay with the motion?
Hey, the motion, I'm willing to remove that last sentence.
Second, you're okay with that?
Right, yep.
You're right, the second, you're, okay, motion maker and second is okay with removing employees no longer on the Gallagher scale, and also excluded from this action, is that the one you wanted?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that, other motions rest, is on the floor minus that. Okay, so that, other motions rest, is on the floor minus that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no from Mr. Lassiter. Next word coming up, you have a sub, a secondary motion?
A second motion, if I could, and I apologize for the the last minute, uh, on this. The the next motion that I would request is this. I move to grant current county employees who are no longer at a step on the pay scale and have had not have their pay adjusted by any other actions since January one of two thousand and twenty-one. A one-time retention bonus of a thousand dollars could be included in the first pay period beginning June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Moved by Hickok.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. Any further discussion? Any from the public? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next we come to on our agenda, items from the public. I do have one item. Um, I need to read this. Items from the public is a time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the Board of Commissioners on the policies and issues affecting county government and its functions. Actions will not be taken during this, this item on any issue brought forth, uh, that are not properly noticed. So, I just wanted to give you that notice, but this is a time to speak, and I do have a speaker request form from Mr. Oh, that's tough writing there. Is it Denny?
Denny Henderson?
Yep, that's you. It is Denny, right? I couldn't see, tell whether that was a D or not, Denny.
I appreciate you taking time.
And we did, and just so you know, Denny, that we did, we all got this too.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I appreciate you taking time. My name is Denny Henderson. Our family lives off, uh, Raider Hill Road on Morris Lane, and we have a property out off Bradsky Road on Backcountry Trail that I purchased three years ago. Um, at that time, uh, the realtor, uh, showed the, uh, place to us, and it had a shop, thirty by forty, with, uh, stubbed-in electric stubbed-in plumbing, and they looked to me like the beginnings of a wonderful, uh, man cave. Um, I bought the property and proceeded to put the fixtures on, the plumbing and the switches on the wall, and then I realized there were some safety concerns. Whatever you do, so I, uh, put an egress window in. My policy is whatever the building is, what you want, at least one egress window. And I also put some, uh, put sheetrock on walls because he had chipboard on ceiling and walls, which is a fire hazard. Anyway, the county proceeded to classify this as a living space. There is a small kitchenette. I have a little microwave, a little, uh, apartment fridge and a sink. There is a, a, a bath with a, excuse me, a bathroom with a stool, a little vanity, and a stand-up shower. And there's a room that is a flex room, because, um, my daughter, who is eleven, we knew crafts in there, storage in there. And, uh, it's not a garage, it's a shop, hobby shop. And so, we went around and around, and when it come to time to build a house, uh, my eyes, I got less, so I bought them, eyes were a couple wide, and we went round and round, because they said I had to tear out all the stuff in the, they called it a living area first. And I said, well, it's not. Finally, they agreed on a verbal that if I did not rent out that what they call additional living space in the shop, we could go ahead. Now, a year later, lots of thousand dollars later, they say it was time for a safety tank inspection, which I did, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, and then I got a voicemail, so I assumed that, oh, yeah, I owe the twenty dollars also. When I went down there, they started chewing on me again about this issue that you've got living space in that shop and three-bedroom, and that's four bedrooms, and it's only allowed for three. I says, it's not, it's not a, it's not a living space, it's a part of the man cave. And, and so, uh, we're still undecided on that one. But I guess, at this point, I would just like to educate, if I could, uh, you guys, gals, that a lot of people now would like to have an extra bathroom in their shop. And it doesn't mean I'm going to produce more to go to, in this case, the drain field. It's just an extra, and when you get old, it's, uh, almost a necessity. But anyway, there's where we're at. Um, today, I brought my four hundred and twenty-dollar check down there and tried to go through the uh, conditional use review application. And they're, again, they're gyrating back and forth. One minute, they say I got a complete rip out that extra stuff shop that's in there, and another minute, they say you need to go through the conditional use.
Conditional use.
So, I just want to make you aware.
Well, Denny, you know, at this point, I mean, it's a public comment period, so we don't, we can't take no action, but I I most definitely appreciate you coming forward to the Commission and making us aware of the situation that you're in, so we, we're aware. And I'm sure we'll look into it.
Okay, one last comment. Certainly, if I was, you know, at this point, I sometimes get, like, just sell it. If I do sell, I guarantee you, I'm not going to do what that realtor and seller did to deceive me. I'm going to say, look, here's the facts, and if you can't, well, here's what you can and can't do with a property. Okay.
So, Denny, you're allowed to call us at any time as well, if you need us to come look at it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I I I have some emails, some pictures, me and Cassandra took last night. I'll try to attach those.
For us. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Denny, that's my area, so you're welcome to give me a call too. I live fairly close to you, because you said Raider Hill. Yep, let me know. I'm your district, uh, for Commissioner as well, so just reach out to me. We'll, we'll get something together.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Denny. Okay, folks, now we're going to.
Consent agenda.
Yep, consent agenda of the planning. Recognize Brittany Moller.
So, it's good afternoon, now Commissioners. Brittany Moller, uh, Planning Director. Uh, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item D is Layout Plan LPL twenty-two dash zero five for Deborah Pimental to subdivide and create lots thirteen C and thirteen D of Battle Creek Mountain Estate subdivision. And Planning Commission recommended approval of Layout Plan LPL twenty-two dash zero five with six conditions. Item E is Layout Plan LPL twenty-two dash zero six for Karen Fonseca, Alan and Becky Knutson, DC Scott as the surveyors, to reconfigure lot lines to create Lot BR of Lot One and Lot CR of Lot One of Battle Creek Mountain Estate subdivision. And Planning Commission recommended approval of Layout Plan LPL twenty-two dash zero six with eleven conditions. Item F is Layout Plan LPL twenty-two dash ten for Joni McVeigh, Jim Peterson as the agent, to subdivide and create lots one through twelve of McVeigh Valley subdivision. And Planning Commission recommended approval of the withdrawal of Layout Plan LPL twenty-two dash ten per the request of the agent. Item G is Layout Plan LPL twenty-two dash zero seven for Dale and Julian Siemensma to subdivide and create lots one, two, three, and four of Oak Draw subdivision. And Planning Commission recommended approval of Layout Plan LPL twenty-two dash zero seven with ten conditions. Item H is Minor Platt, NPL twenty-two dash zero eight for Diamond Spur Lodge LLC, Diamond Spur Properties LLC, Andrew and Alicia Edson, to combine three lots to create Lot Nine R of the Forks at Remington Ranch subdivision. And Planning Commission recommended approval of Minor Platt, NPL twenty-two dash zero eight with seven conditions. And finally, item I is Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment OA twenty-two dash zero two for Pennington County to amend Section one oh three definitions and Section three oh three multi-family dwellings of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Planning Commission recommended to continue Ordinance Amendment OA twenty-two dash zero two to the April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you, Brittany. Is there anybody from the public that would like items D through I pulled from the consent agenda? For separate consideration. Seeing none, any from the board?
Aye.
Item H from Mr. Drew, any other one? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve all items except for item H.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Ross Connect, second by Lassiter. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in for, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, Mr. Drew.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, and I talked to Brittany about this over the weekend too, or late last week, I guess. Uh, this one points out that, on this minor plant, that's got seven conditions on it. Uh, it's also got six notes on the plat, and this is, my goal is to try to get rid of notes on the plat, no matter, and Brittany explained it. I mean, the notes are are really non-consequential as far as, uh, property owners and so forth. Uh, but I think it's the notes that fail to get carried across to buyers. They tend to not see the notes on the plats, and so, I'd just like to see us moving forward with no notes on the plats.
Okay, so, Ms. Drews, you're bringing that to our attention.
Yep.
About the notes, but otherwise, you're in favor of the.
Yep, I'd make a motion.
For item H?
Second.
Moved by Hickok, second by Drew. And Alicia is on Zoom, but this is, you do have a motion for approval, so I don't think she's gone? Okay, so, well, we do have somebody from the public who wants to comment.
Hello, Jeffrey Crocker, KALJ Engineering. I'm the agent.
Oh, you're the agent, okay.
Um, I was having problems hearing what what the, um, what you had brought up.
On H?
Yes, on H.
It's got, it carries six notes on the plat, and I just do not, personally, I don't like notes on plats.
Okay. You want them removed from the plat, then?
Well, I'm not asking on this particular one, but I'm, I'm saying going forward, I'd like to see us.
I see, you just want it recorded.
To record plats without notes.
Okay, I understand then. Okay, no, no further comment.
Um, Mr. Chair, I do have a comment on that, on the new subdivision regulations. Uh, some of these notes will be actually in the certificates. So, for these easements and such, when they do the certificates and the signatory portion of it, it will be in that instead of as notes on the plat. So, when they dedicate these rights of way and the maintenance and the requirements for them, they will actually be in the certificates instead of as notes.
Okay, thank you.
So, that has been addressed.
Thank you, Brittany.
All right, sounds like we've got some good information on that one.
I know that. Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, so we, excuse me, we have a motion for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Well, you already hit a motion.
Yeah. Okay, now we we come to, uh, contested hearings. Like, I can remember if you want to speak on any of these items, please pick out a, a speaker request form, give it to Holly. Uh, agents and applicants, you're always welcome to come up and make comment if you feel the need to. Cody.
Uh, Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item J is Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA twenty-two dash zero two. It is to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from agriculture district to rural residential district. The applicant landowner is Bruce Sandro Rampeberg. Uh, the agent is QTM Design Solutions. We should know, was in the audience. I don't know if she isn't anymore. Uh, involves eighteen point five two acres. The location of the property is at one three nine five nine Neck York Road. Uh, current zoning again is agriculture district with the existing land use of residential. Uh, surrounding zoning is agriculture district. Access is off Neck York Road, and there's no special flood hazard area. Uh, this was heard before, uh, the Planning Commission, who recommended to deny without prejudice. Um, they recommended that the applicant come back with, uh, the zoning of ranchette district. Uh, however, staff still recommends approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA twenty-two dash zero two.
Mr. Chairman.
She got you first.
I just wanted a clarification on something he said. Did he say approval or denial?
So, the the Planning Commission recommended denial without prejudice. Staff's recommendation is approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment uh, CA twenty-two dash zero two.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Deb.
Um, I was at the Planning Commission. Why we did that is because, um, of the surrounding area. It didn't make sense to lower it down, um, to rural instead of ranchette, um, in that area, based that the whole area is ag. And they didn't have, like, a person representing saying, we need it because of this, this, and this. They're just doing it because, um, I don't know if the lots are, just need to be smaller for them or what, but, um, bottom line is, you had a lot of labors in here. And, uh, Planning Commission also, um, again, thought it would be better at ranchette just for the reasoning behind the rezoning.
So, from Planning Commission, it, Planning Commission's recommendations to deny without prejudice, the comprehensive plan.
So, they can come back and ask her, or make it ranch.
Ask for ranchette. Okay, so that's our update from Planning Commission. We have two items for this, I believe, with about the same recommendations. Um, any further questions from the board of, for Cody? If not, I got some speaker request forms, then I'll go to the applicant if there are. Nothing? Okay, I'll go to, I have two speaker request forms, one from Keith Jackson.
Funny information, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drew.
So, J is for the, uh, Council, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and item K is for the rezon.
Yeah.
So, you're going to let him speak on both at the same time?
This is for J and K, so you just will put them together. If you have comments.
Same kind of thing.
I didn't understand that.
Mr. Drew asked, there's two items for this. There's, uh, one for the comprehensive plan and a public hearing for rezoning, both from the same applicants, and so, you're, you're pretty much discussing for both of them. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so.
So, I'll go ahead. Keith Jackson, I am at, uh, one three nine four six Neck York Road for the past sixty years. And, um, I think just to continue the comment that was made two weeks ago, the comments on referring to ranchette-sized properties and ag properties and the distinction between the two, and now, historically, the lots would have been ten-acre lots up and down Neck York Road. You go back further in history, in the early nineteen sixties, the existing four, five acre lots to the adjacent to the west was in that era. And then there's another set of three to four acre lots, probably within a quarter of a mile, that were probably, I'm going to say, prior to nineteen sixty, depending on the age of the owner. I think he set that up for his, excuse me, four children to have a piece of property whenever that transpired. And that property recently negotiated, and it was sold as maybe three, four acre lots that had evidently been established years and years ago. So, when I heard comment that there was a precedence of properties adjacent that were less than ten, that's kind of the history of of those properties. But, like I say, up and down Neck York Road, ten-acre lots have been the minimum. And I would just recommend, I, I, not that, I see the the issue with the eighteen-acre lot, try to divide that into ten. But, as was mentioned at the last, at the Planning Commission meeting, that maybe they need to be under the term ranchettes, and I'm sure in the early sixties, they were not familiar with a ranchette term. And I'm just, um, expressing my agreeance that that probably should be the classification for those properties and not the residential. That changes that to a future, um, question of subdividing.
Thank, thank you, Keith.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Keith from the board? Ms. Hickel. Ms. Hickok.
Just a couple of things. Um, this was, um, done also through the city. Um, and they wanted to do that for their plating. But again, um, they're plating in that three-mile district where they're putting infrastructure, putting building within that three-mile district that needs to be supported by infrastructure. So again, that surrounding area is ag. So if we keep putting areas where they're plating and they want to put city infrastructure in those areas, people are like, well, they're gonna come out that way. Well, we're already seeing, um, people might be coming out that way, but how long is it gonna take to get the infrastructure to take care of those areas, uh, that far out? So again, I keep saying, um, that three-mile district is really causing some issues for surrounding areas with that plating because they want to put, again, city infrastructure in county developments. Um, for the future, I could see if that area was surrounded, um, and that's the area we're planning on for the future to just pop out there anytime soon. Um, you've got a lot of area before then as well, before you need that city infrastructure. And, um, again, you need water out there, you need sufficient roads out there. And, uh, unfortunately, then you consider, uh, what we do have for community, uh, when they're planning in the city as well, so.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
She was just making a comment.
Sure.
Thanks.
And I'm agreeing with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have Annie Daniel.
Okay, so do we need to take action on those?
Uh, we're, we're still taking public comment, our speaker request.
Oh, that's, oh.
On, on those two items. Go ahead, Annie.
Good afternoon, my name is Annie Daniel, one three nine four-eight Larriett Road, five seven seven zero-two, right across the street in one of those five-acre agricultural zoned plots. First, after being here for so long today, I just want to thank you all for doing what you do. And I wish I was getting government compensation for enduring all this today, but I'm not. Um, and I could see why it would be such a headache as well, so thank you for all of that. So, uh, I'm, I'm a little vocal, so you're gonna have to bear with me. Um, I prepared something. But, uh, so I'm here to fight against any consideration of rezoning in my Neck Yoke, my Neck Yoke Road area. Um, thanks to an amazing county commissioner who solely and actively stood up for the existing residents' property rights and for the serious concerns of the people that currently live there. The rezoning of rural residential was denied with prejudice. So now Neck Yoke, Neck Yoke Road from Shipwrecks to Gaslight is safe from being turned into a city. A little bit longer. So I also want to point out that this entire area, um, with the exception of the plateau that runs southwest, um, known as Coyote Flats, we do not have a district city name. We don't have any representation, um, as far as the municipality of Rapid City. Um, we are known as out in the country of Rapid City. So I guess maybe we should start being referred to as three-mile area outside of Rapid City. Our only real res- representation is Ron Roskinek for District Number One. So upon some of my, uh, biggest concerns, upon presentation, the KTM folks, such as Janelle, made it seem that there were many areas that are already deemed to be rural residential. And then what's one more, right? So let me clarify that there's only one location in the entire area, the yellow there, that is rural residential. It's up on limestone, and the owners split the property so their friends can actually be their neighbors, which is great. Um, it was not for profit, nor was it for any intended future subdivisions, which I could fully assume is gonna be in the intent here. Um, so I can't tell you that I know more of any rural residentials in our area because I've repeatedly tried to contact Cody Sack at the planning department, and he does not return calls or emails. I'd like to obtain to know what we're working with in all of our Black Hills Forest here from Shipwrecks to Gaslight. Um, so, let's see here. So of course Cody would have to be ultimately aware of all of his own classifications in this area since he was assisting KTM with their findings for their presentation, so he had undoubtedly done all of his homework. So my house has recently been reassessed for property taxes with an increase of thirty-two percent. So I'm a little pissed when a government employee doesn't return a phone call or send an email with similar information. But I digress. So I'm here today to find out what our only representation of our area thinks. So Commissioner Roskinek, will you be supporting your constituents' desire to leave their home as it is, to leave their area as it is? I'll be honest with you, I've already contacted over a hundred homeowners in the area. Like I said, I'm pretty vocal. And they all feel very strongly about not wanting rezoning in our area and to keep everything ag and light ag for this whole Neck Yoke Valley, Coyote Flats, Neck Yoke Hills area, whatever you'd like to call it. Um, so. So we have all that live in this area have also invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, to live out here in the country. If we ever expected or wanted city living, we would have moved to the city. I have mapped out the area from Shipwrecks to Gaslight, and I promise you, we are gonna form a unified front to fight any new rezoning or building in this area because every single person that lives here wants to keep it the way it is. And God bless technology, we will be, um, on one email link, keeping everybody on the same page with any new developments of any type of rezoning, because we're gonna do whatever we can to fight this. But how long will our community have to fight the powers that be to look out for our own property rights? So we ask ourselves, now that all of our property taxes have recently skyrocketed, is it okay for the city to take away our country life, which is why we came to this area in the first place? Um, I don't have faith in the planning commission that they have done any investigating or research before they were so eager to vote on approval on any of these rezonings. Um, if I could quote Jim Coleman stating that we all bought our properties and should have known that this expansion was coming. But he obviously did not understand that this concept, that someone has to pay for the newly, newly expanded urbanized dwellings with sewage and streets and all that fun stuff. So we all know now, thanks to a competent and transparent elected official, that there is no money in the RC or Pennington County budget to accommodate, accommodate all of this infrastructure out in the country. But these boards just keep approving everything. Water, septic tanks, forest, forest fires, wildlife, emergency resources, traffic, crime, schools, and being spread out is all that matters to these residents. We don't have the resources to accommodate new people. They don't even know what our water situation was. So us lower Coyote Flats are on a well, a private well, and multiple neighbors recently have had to drop their pumps. We barely have enough water for just us now. How did this guy even make it to the planning board not knowing this? Not knowing what our water situation is, but hey, approve! It's fine, you could go ahead, put rural residential. Um, when does enough become enough? So additionally, they did not seem to even understand the layout of the area of Neck Yoke Road. Chairman Marsh did not even know if that street went through or not. It begins at Reptile Gardens Shipwrecks area and continues up through Coyote Flats, ending out to Rockerville Road, exiting out by sixteen by Gaslight. So he's deciding the future for an area that he's not even familiar with, nor wished to find out every dynamic of that area. Emergencies, fires, traffic, crime, you know, all the good stuff in our, our one big little area. So when these approvals occur, it simply tells me that these elected officials must have ulterior motives. Either they are friends with the Rampelbergs and wants to help them out. Everyone is, let me be clear, I love the Rampelbergs, I bought my house from them. Great neighbors, not, nothing personal. Or they just have some special interests in construction companies, land out there, or something. It has to be a joke. So as Jim Coleman said, the Rampelbergs' property rights matter, but so do ours. And I really, to my local home, uh, excuse me, to my local home and property appraiser, I would like to know your stance. I'd love to converse an email with you. I'd like to add on that, I don't mean to be aggressive, but I will fight for what I believe in and for my kids' futures with every attempt to be considerate, so I do apologize. And I thank you so much for trying to preserve our way of life because our way of life matters too. We don't have to build. Areas turn to crap when you build too much, and it's overpopulativeness, especially when you're not prepared to it, for it. Why build? Why do we have to grow out there? Why do you want to sto- to destroy this chunk of Black Hills Forest?
Okay, Annie, we need to wrap up.
I'm wrapping up, I'm sorry, I'm passionate about this, I apologize. So let's just leave everything out as. So this weekend, I want you guys to go take a ride down sixteen from Shipwrecks to Rockerville Road. Check it out, tell me how you think it would be if the population exploded in there by turning things from rural residential, knowing one house per three acres for one per, per ten that we have now. That's all, I apologize.
Thank you, Annie, I, I, I think it was kind of a below-the-belt thing, uh, shooting at a commissioner from some of your comments, but I...
Nothing direct, and I do apologize.
I could see the passion that you have out there and...
It's, it's a lot of frustration with the last commission where it was just so easy to just approve.
But I just wanted to make you aware that, you know, accusations will be careful.
True, nothing direct, I do apologize.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions from the commission? To Annie.
Just one thing.
Ms. Hickok.
Um, to her defense, that was very, um, appropriate on the infrastructure, but, um, man, the, uh, planning commission is the one that recommended, uh, go to ranchette. So that planning commission, I think except for Jim, um, moved forward on ranchette just because they would like, because of the infrastructure that is to support out there, the ranchette made more sense on the land. We'd like to do property rights, but they didn't have a good enough reason to make the lot smaller when we had asked, except that the city said that you could do rural. So that's why that ended up in that sense to be, uh, ranchette, to fit in with the future land use there and the zoning for the future in that area. If it switched, they could always go down further to rural once that area starts, um, having more infrastructure, a different road, more water, and the amenities it takes in order to, uh, subdivide lots going out that far. We just went to a regional water, uh, meeting, and they were saying some things about doing developments twenty-five and under, people getting away with things because they wouldn't do, uh, water districts and different things in their areas. Well, this example of people don't want to build the roads, they don't want to do the infrastructure it takes in order to make those smaller lots for the future. Um, but Rapid City, again, without trying to beat up Rapid City, they get a platus, and that causes us a lot of issues when they keep doing that. And, um, we are looking at solutions, if I'm correct, Ms. Holly, in different areas so those can coincide. But in the meantime, I'll keep saying, um, why change a whole area when this fits in with ranchette? They could still make their money, and they could still do the infrastructure in order to make this development work.
Thank you, Deb. I'm gonna let Cody respond because hi- his name was brought up several times. Cody?
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Uh, so she did leave a couple of voicemails. Uh, she wanted a map from Shipwrecks down, um, south of the property that was emailed to her last Tuesday afternoon. Um, sometimes our emails go to the spam folder, um, or it could have been sent to the wrong email. I tried going off the email that she left on her voicemail, but staff did respond with her request. Um, second, we don't just look at colors on a map when we make recommendations. Uh, for example, infrastructure is brought up. Uh, infrastructure for rural residential, if you look at our comprehensive plan amendment, is actually private, um, utilities, so private sewer, private water. Um, so there is no infrastructure that needs to be brought out there for that, for actually, for technically, for rural residential. Um, so the city's not requiring any water hookups. I don't believe they're requiring any additional road improvements or anything. Uh, access is off Neck Yoke Road, which is an improved, uh, right-of-way, twenty-four feet wide, sixty-six feet wide for the toll right-of-way. So that's the stuff that staff looks at in our, when we review these. Also, we look at land use. Um, granted, the majority of that, uh, area is agriculture. Uh, within that half-mile circle that you see there, uh, there's thirty-three properties, uh, twenty-two of them, so two-thirds, uh, have, um, no assessment of ag from equalization. They're assessed as residential. So that's things that we look at. Eleven of them are assessed with some agriculture things, um, for like hay and different things like that. But tho- those are the things that we look at. We don't just look at, oh, this color is within this, within this half-mile circle, we look at other things involved as well.
Thanks, Cody. We have one more speaker request form.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a question to Cody?
Sure.
There's a lot of land in the county that's either, uh, zone ag, limited ag, or something of that, that nature, but it still gets assessed as residential. Doesn't mean that it's not large chunks of land that are be, you know, that people wanted to move out to because it gave them a lot of space.
Correct, and I'm aware of that, and I double-checked with Shannon before I made that. Um, there's some different codes that pop up on Rapid Map, and I confirmed with him that the NC one code, um, has no assessment of ag, of, of any sort. So, uh, I believe, um, someone at the last meeting brought up that, um, they have chickens on their property. Uh, rural residential, um, low-density residential, they can, depending on the acreage of the property, can support different animals. You don't have to be ag to have...
That was, that was more of my point, yeah, because you can get ag classification once you hit forty acres, uh, even if you're not doing anything on the property, you're correct, correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
And if you're under forty acres, you get ag proper, uh, ag designation if you're doing something and you meet the criteria from the state. But some people still have thirty-eight acres, they still run ag on it. They just don't apply for the ag exemption because either they're not selling it, they just still want the horses, they still want the, you know, the goats or the chickens or whatever. So that could be a, a misleading factor just because they're out in the, out there and they're just not getting an ag exemption for the taxation. That's what I want to point out.
So, so I should, I should clarify my comment too. Um, you can, equalization can have like an ag structure on there without being taxed ag. Um, so you can still have like a, uh, like a, I don't know how to, equalization's way better at explaining it than I am. Um...
You can have a horse barn.
Yeah, cor- correct, and they can consider that, uh...
An ag structure.
An ag structure without actually taxing the property fully as ag and giving the ag exemption for taxes and getting, um, I think it's a tax break, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not the tax expert and...
I do believe it has to be utilized for ag only because I have the same structures and I, and mine meet those qualifications. It's the reason why I'm, I'm just clarifying that. So all I was doing is just clarifying, some people just have land, they have chickens, they may have thirty-eight acres, but they still want that ag feel. Maybe that's the better aspect of it, and they're still paying city tax value.
Correct, and also with, um, the plating through the city was brought up. Um, currently, the applicant is, um, applying to subdivide that into, uh, two parcels. One, um, there can remain on, I believe they're selling the other parcel to their, um, son. Uh, the reason why Janelle or, or KTM did the rural residential was because when they look at this map, they know the criteria that we look at, and there is rural residential in that, that land use in the area. Um, for the increase of, of density in the area, if you, I believe someone brought up that there was a hundred and thirty-six acres to the north that was, um, being sold. If you could break that into thirteen lots without having to rezon, um, and that'd be through the city where the, the county wouldn't have any, any jurisdiction over the rezon. So just because a rezon's required here doesn't mean that rezones will be required on other things and that development won't happen in that area.
Okay, thank you, Cody. We got one more speaker request form, and then I'd look for a motion, take some action on these items. Ms. Julie Frye.
Thank you, actually, I registered as Mueller. That's okay, we've known each other a long time. Um, Julie Mueller, and I live out there as well. And I think the first thing I'd like to say is the vote that you're gonna take today, if you take one, is gonna set a precedent for what's gonna happen out there. Um, and I think the words development have been used. We don't want overdevelopment out there. When we bought our land in the early to mid-nineties, we were told specifically it's one house per ten acres. And that's what it's been for a long, long time. Um, and, and people respect that, that's why we buy out there, that's why we live out there, so that we don't have neighbors close by. Like Annie talked about, and I, she's very introverted, so I'm sorry she had some trouble talking. Anyway, um, we have, we do have some water issues. Well, we have road issues if you start overdeveloping out there. Um, I believe our well, going back to water, I believe our well is at least eight-hundred-and-forty feet down. And if we have to drop ours again too for water, I mean, to me, you could be setting people up for failure as well because it's gonna be problems out there. Also, when you talk about the rural, um, residential, um, the Rampelberg Zone, eighteen acres. And if they want to subdivide it down, I mean, they could technically go down to six three-acre lots if you guys approve this. And we understand it's possibly, you know, for their son to live in, but if you would go nine and nine, that's still not the precedent that's been out there forever. Um, I guess I would appreciate it if you would consider... I guess I would appreciate it if you would consider leaving it as it is. Don't push this area into a rural, or excuse me, more of an urban type area where it gets flooded with these. I know some of you live out in the country a little bit and you like, you like some, some open spaces. And we're really blessed to live out there. We knew what we were doing when we got out there and we knew the, it was ten acres per home. Everybody out there knows that. So please don't make a decision that sets a precedent to make things more populated, I guess, you know what I'm saying, more congested. Let us live out there where it's open and not, not full of congestion with traffic all the time. I can't, I don't have a lot more to say. I just, I think you guys know what I'm trying to say. And if you would please, please not approve this just for one, one, you know, one person or I guess one family that, just the two Rampleburgs, it negatively affects all of us. And I understand property rights. We have to deal with that in my other time, property rights, property rights, property rights. But please don't forget the property rights of all of us that when we bought our land, knew what the rules were. And they did as well. So they're asking for a special preference. And I would hope that you would keep all of us in mind out there so we don't set a precedent, so things start going out of control. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
One more thing before she speaks.
Hold on, we got two people going.
Now I remember on the planning commission. So they wanted nine acre lots, which is ranchette. They wanted nine and nine and a half, which is ranchette. Okay? Why we said ranchette is for that reason. They said they needed to split the lot. Then they went to the city. Janelle said they went to the city and they decided that they would do rural. Well, if you only needed ranchette, basically, and Janelle couldn't tell our planning commission a good enough reason to put it into rural when they needed to split two lots and they could still make that area nine acre lots, it made more sense. So because of infrastructure, because of what was out there, it, it just made sense to do ranchette instead of rural residential. Why would you ask for less if you only needed to split the lot twice?
Makes sense?
Good point. Mr. Laster?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cody, can you answer a quick question? That yellow area that's there, it's zoned. How many lots is it? Now what size are those lots?
I believe that those lots are, I'm not sure on the exact number. I think it's like ten to thirteen lots in that area. Those lots are five acres apiece. Also, the lots, sorry, the lots right across the road, even though they're zoned ag, they're legal not conforming at five acres for ag as well. So there are lots that are under the ten acre lot size out there.
Follow up, just, is that since before, I mean, how long has it been that they've been?
I, I believe the gentleman said nineteen seventy, but the reason, the reason why I bring it up is because people are talking about precedence. There are five acre lots out there since nineteen seventy, back before our zoning ordinance required a certain lot size for them.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Janelle and then I'm gonna come back to the commission for some steps for action. Janelle?
I was actually hoping to not have to make any comment today because we were going to allow the, the request to deny without prejudice to move forward based on the comments that we had at planning commission. But I did want to reiterate that when I look at this as a consultant, I look at this map here and the information the same that your staff does. And I see these properties that are already zoned rural residential and are already five or approximately five acres in size, as well as some lots across the street that are zoned ag, but are only five acres in size, even though they've been that way for a while. So that was the reasoning behind the application. There was opposition from the adjoining landowners saying that they felt that the potential for rural residential would allow too many divisions, even though Mr. Rampleburg only wanted to divide into two lots. So based on the comments at Planning Commission and specifically from Commissioner Haggard, we submitted a request or an application to rezone to ranchette. That's already on file and comprehensive plan amendment. So to say that you will not see this again is incorrect because as the meeting sequence allows, within a couple of weeks or a month, you will see our request to rezone that property to ranchette, which is a minimum of five acres, which matches the size or density of those across the street and exceeds the size and density of those other areas that you see as rural residential. And we specifically took that action based on the conversation at Planning Commission and based on the direction from Commissioner Haggard. So I just didn't want to leave you with the impression that this was going away. It's not going away. It's coming back with, with a different request for ranchette, so.
Thank you. And I think we've taken a lot of testimony here and I think we've got a good understanding of what we're voting on. So we, we are on item J. It's the public hearing in the comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash oh two. Blue Bruce and Sandra Appleberg, KTM Design Solutions, their agent, to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from agricultural district to rural residential district according to section two oh five oh seven five oh eight, Pennington County. Planning commission's recommendation is to deny without prejudice the comprehensive plan CA twenty-two dash oh two.
Second.
Moved by Haggard, seconded by Lassiter. Discussion, Cody?
So I would just like to make sure that that motion involves the without prejudice, which would allow them to come back.
It does.
That's what I said. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, which is adjacent to it. Did you want to read that into record?
Yeah, so item, item K is rezone RZ twenty-two dash zero two. It's to rezone eighteen point five two acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. The applicant landowner is Bruce and Rample, Bruce and Sandra Rampleburg. The planning commission recommended to deny without prejudice rezone RZ twenty-two dash zero two. And staff would change its recommendation to deny without prejud, to deny rezone RZ twenty-two dash zero two without prejudice.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Laster?
I'd move to deny without prejudice rezone RZ twenty-two dash zero two, the planning commission's recommendation.
Motion made by Lassiter, seconded by Haggard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Chairman, if I could make one comment?
Yep.
That was a four to one vote on the planning commission. So it wasn't Deb Haggard. There was three other commissioners besides me on that vote.
Okay. Thank you, Deb. We're getting, just for the people's information, we are getting down to the wire. We have a couple of commissioners that have to leave, so we are gonna be trying to move fast.
I gotta go now.
She's gotta go now. So now we're on aye. Okay, we need to clarify a previous motion, Ms. Holly. I'm gonna call Ms. Holly. Annie's, she needs a little clarification.
Commissioners, just briefly, before we lose the other two on the vote that we took previously on the compression adjustment steps for the employees. We didn't quite get the right technical wording on the fly. So I want to clarify that it is acceptable for the motion to read, to grant the one, the thousand dollar bonus to any applicable employee that's at the top of the scale or off of the scale.
Were they both, can I ask a question to her?
Go ahead.
Are they both not getting any steps?
Correct. If they're on the top of the scale, step twenty-four, that, that group wouldn't receive anything. So we want to clarify that it would be anybody applicable, top of scale or off of scale.
Right.
I think that was the motion makers intent.
I made, I made the original motion on that. I'm agreeable with that.
Okay. I just want to make sure we clarify that so it goes in the record properly.
I think, I think there was two motions and that was the second one for the bonus.
Yes.
And now that motion was made by Deb and seconded by
Gary, I thought.
Gary.
And I think we're all agreeable.
Clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody.
Thanks, Deb. See you. Cody?
We're on item L, correct? L, item L?
L, okay. They, they put lowercase. Looks like an a to me.
Okay. Agenda item L is planning unit development overlay PU twenty-two dash zero one. It's to allow a planning unit development overlay for a specialty resort to include four rental cabins. An existing single-family residence to be used as a vacation home rental slash caretaker slash manager's residence. The applicant and landowner is Nick and Armina Hopeart. The location of the property is one one four seven seven Gillette Prairie Road. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of residential and guesthouse. This has been in front of the Board of Commissioners several times. It's been continued to allow the applicant to work with his neighbor on figuring out some agreement. I believe that that agreement was, an agreement was reached. So the planning commission recommended approval of planning unit development twenty-two dash zero one with conditions and staff recommends approval with planning unit development PU twenty-two dash zero one with conditions as well.
Move to approve? Moved by Mr. Lassiter, seconded by Ross Connect. Any discussion from public or commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M?
Item M is vacation section line rightaway VS twenty-two dash zero two. It's to vacate a section line rightaway between sections twenty-one and twenty-eight. I just was informed that the applicant wishes to continue the item to the, I'm not sure when the next Board of Commissioners, the April nineteenth Board of Commissioners meeting.
Move to continue to the April eighteenth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth Board of Commissioners meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue to the April nineteenth meeting. I do have a speaker's request form from Charlie Johnson on this. Did you?
There's a lot of history involved in this matter. It's been a long time coming. So I'd just prefer to have it continued so all of you could hear it and make your decision.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. Motion on the floor is to continue this item to the nineteenth. Any further, no discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, N, sorry.
Item N is vacation of section line rightaway VS twenty-two dash zero four. It is to vacate approximately fifty-six feet of section line rightaway between sections fourteen and twenty-three of township T two S, range six E. The applicant's landowner is Michael Lisa Gennaro. The location of the property is at the intersection of Playhouse Road and Oak Meadows Road. Current zoning is agriculture district. Existing land use is vacant. There's no special flood hazard area on the property. It appears to the application that the petition and all requirements were meant to apply for the vacation of section line. There, the property is vacant, many structures. This was right around for an interdepartmental review, county highway, came back and said that they're opposed to vacating any section line that does not serve the public's best interest. The applicant met the petition requirements. So a little prop, property history, the subject property was created after, after the creation of the section line. Therefore, the property was created knowing that the section line ran through the property. The subject property was created as a leftover portion of the property that was plotted in two thousand and eight. It's the remaining balance of the Hermosa number two load. Was supposed to be rezoned. It never was. The lot is zero point six acre and zoned agriculture district. The, the state South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources in Pennington County require a one acre lot size to put a septic on it. The applicant was not aware of that. I spoke with him this morning and staff, he read staff's report recommending that he plot the property. He is in favor of plotting the property. So with that, staff is recommending denial of vacation of section line rightaway VS twenty-two dash zero four. Staff does not find any benefit to the public to vacate the section line.
Yeah, is that applicant here?
I do not believe so.
Or has he just communicated that to you?
He, yeah, he, he received the report. He read through it. He called me this morning and I talked to him. He was unaware of the one acre requirement. He wants to build a house. So him and I were discussing the process that he needs to move forward to plot that property and, and get it zoned properly so he could have enough buildable area on that property without vacating the section.
So he's okay with this, this motion that you just?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ross Connect?
So if the section line was vacated, would, that wouldn't deny access to any property that would not have access with it?
No, it would not.
Okay.
I'd look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
You mean to move to deny vacation of section line rightaway VS twenty-two oh four by resolution as there's no benefit to the public? That's your motion?
To deny, right?
You're moving to deny or to approve?
Approve.
Oh, to approve?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, just for point of clarification, Cody, you said the applicant is acceptable to the denial at this point in time so he can work through the process that he laid out to him because he can't do what he wanted to do.
Correct. He, he wasn't aware of, of that requirement. So even him vacating that section line would not allow him to build on that property like he wants to. So he would, even, even if the, the board were to vacate it today, what you would create is this section would be, of section line would be vacated. And then when he came and plotted the process, there would be half of a section line running through, through the newly plotted property. So, and staff would not be in favor of that because it would just dead end right at, right in the center of his property.
Wanted to make sure.
So there was a motion, but there was no second.
Mr. Chair, I will change that motion because I didn't understand that the applicant was in favor of that. With that being said, I'll make the motion to deny.
Second.
Okay. Motion to deny vacation section line rightaway VS twenty-two dash oh four by resolution as there is no benefit to the public and seconded by Mr. Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item O?
Item O is major planning development review PU seventeen dash zero nine. It's to review an existing planning and development to allow a church slash place of worship. The applicant and landowner is Big Horn Canyon Ministries Incorporated, Perry Lewis. The location of the property is three seven seven Anderson Road. Currently zoned planning unit development district. Existing land use is a specialty resort. Access is off Anderson Road and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Staff has not received any complaints from the public on this. And so the planning commission recommended approval of the review of PU seventeen dash zero nine and staff also recommends approval of the extension of PU seventeen dash zero nine.
Mr. Drew?
So Cody, is this a three-year review type situation on this? Or is that an automatic review at a certain period of time on that?
So it goes by, it goes by the conditions. Generally, when a, when the item first gets approved by the planning commissioner or the board of commissioners, we put a year, a year review on it. And then at the one-year review, we generally put like a three to five. And if in that time period, they, they're meeting all of their conditions and we don't have any issues from the public, we recommend approval based off of a complaint basis. That's the condition that's in here now, so that'll be only reviewed on a complaint basis for moving forward.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to approve, Lassiter, seconded by Ross Connect. Any further discussion, questions from public or commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item P?
Item P is planning and development overlay PU twenty-two dash zero three. It's to allow a planning and development overlay for a specialty resort to include fifty RV campsites, twenty-five rental cabins, a shower house, a wedding venue, a bar slash saloon and a guide service. The applicant and landowner is Sobos LLC, Nathan and Alexis Soboleski. The location of the property is two fourth, three zero zero one hundred and seventy-third avenue. Current zoning is agriculture district. Existing land use is residential and agricultural and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. This was heard before the planning commission on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, where they recommended approval of planning and development overlay PU twenty-two dash zero three with conditions. And staff also recommends approval of planning and development overlay PU twenty-two dash zero three with conditions.
Mr. Drew?
Cody, on this one here is described as an Airbnb. Is it only described that way because of the location?
So the, the applicants put an Airbnb on there and when I called them to clarify what they meant by Airbnb, they meant just rental cabins, like just classic rental cabins. Some people call Airbnbs different things. It's supposed, they, they meant rental cabins when.
Okay, okay. So Airbnb is not really, I mean, that isn't what they're proposing.
Yeah, it's not gonna be used as like a vacation home rental. It's, it's actually like a campground, rental cabins.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Look for a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Lassiter.
Second.
Seconded by Ross Connect and this is with twenty-seven conditions. Am I correct? Yep.
Twenty-six condition, or twenty, so twenty-seven. The planning commission added a condition.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item Q.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Thonison, Deputy Planning Director. Item Q is major planning unit development amendment PU twenty-two dash zero two to amend the existing planning unit development to allow twenty full-service RV sites, five cabins to be constructed within an existing twenty by eighty foot buildings and a caretaker slash manager residence to include an office building. The applicant is Aaron Olson. Property owner is Rushmore Forest Products. Their agent is KTM Design Solutions Janelle, and the applicant are in the audience if you have questions for them. This is in the Three Forks area located at two three eight four nine highway three eighty-five. It is currently zoned, planned unit development, and existing land use is commercial. There's no special flood hazard area on the property. These are the existing conditions that were approved under PU ninety-six dash zero two. Uh, staff did review them to ensure they're meeting conditions. The first two, they did not meet. Um, property history, there are several, uh, building permits that were present on the property. Uh, the only existing building that is there currently is a storage warehouse that was built in nineteen oh two according to Department of Equalization records. Uh, there are currently onsite wastewater treatment system permits for the property and assigned permit. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Um, emergency services did have comments on that stating that each of the five cabin should clearly be, should be clearly marked with the indicated cabin number, be visible from the driveway, and that full physical address is be posted on a sign inside each cabin. Also that the main address number be clearly posted on the office facing the driveway where the main campground driveway intersects highway three eighty-five, and lastly that each of the RV parking spots be marked with a unique spot number clearly visible from the driveway and that each RV be given something upon check-in showing the complete physical address of the campground. And these are all addressed as conditions of approval. There were no other objections or concerns that were received. Staff's analysis of the request is that staff did conduct a site visit validating the exist- existing conditions of approval were being met. Uh, the applicant plans to expand operations within the planned unit development. These uses appear to be consistent with the uses already permitted on their, under the existing planned unit development. The applicant will need to provide the planning department with current licenses from the South Dakota Department of Health and Department of Revenue prior to operation. And there's also an existing outhouse on the property that will need to either be filled in or rendered inoperable or removed from the property. Uh, the two mobile homes and one carport that have been removed from the property, the applicant will need to obtain an approved building permit for the removal of these structures. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval of major planning unit development amendment PU twenty-two dash zero two with conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Move to approve major plan unit development amendment PU twenty-two dash oh two with twenty-six conditions.
Been moved.
Second.
Seconded by Lassiter. Mr. Drew?
Yes. Um, got a question on the, on the, um, uh, inside, let's see, I'm on the wrong one here. The five cabins to be constructed within the existing twenty by eighty building.
Yes, sir.
So will those five cabins encompass the entire interior of that building?
It looks like it will. Uh, the applicant is here if you have questions for him. The site plan is here on the screen for you. It looks like there's actually only four in there. I believe the request was for five, uh, but again, the applicant is here to, to clarify.
Can you, can you clarify? Is it going to be four or five? You're just going to put a wall up in between those or what do you loft?
Aaron Olson, um, I am the buyer of this property. I, there will be five cabins, I believe. Um, that is what my request is. There is an updated, uh, drawing. It's just, uh, hasn't been provided, so, um, that building will be walled off. Um.
To say, a unit for each one?
To have separate units, correct?
Okay. That answer your question?
It does.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? We had a motion, correct?
Yep.
We had a motion in a second.
And motion in a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item R.
Agenda item R is planning unit development overlay PU twenty-two dash zero four to allow planning unit development overlay to allow a specialty resort to include three tent spots, one treehouse with living quarters and a caretaker slash manager's residence. The applicants and landowners are John and Tracy Weeby. Uh, site location is two four one seven four South Rockerville Road. Currently zoned agriculture district. Uh, existing land use is residential. Access is off Rockerville Road and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Criteria for approval for PU D overlay districts are on the screen. I'll read staff's responses, beginning with number one, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district conform to the uses by right or conditional, conditional use permitted in an agriculturally zoned district. Number two, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district are of a type and are located to minimize detrimental influence upon surrounding properties. Number three, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district meet Pennington County Order, zoning ordinance section three ten which governs off-street parking. Number four, the proposed PU D overlay district is ten point zero four acres. Number five, the proposed PU D overlay district is owned by the applicants, John and Tracy Weeby. Number six, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district are not designed as to be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety or general welfare. And number seven refers to this next table, which is on your screen. Again, I'll read staff's responses, beginning with number one, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district are not designed as to be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety or general welfare. Number two, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Number three, the proposed PU D overlay district should not impede the normal and orderly development and, and improvement of the surrounding properties for use permitted in the district. Number four, the applicant is working with South Dakota Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources and the Planning Department to gain approval of the onsite wastewater treatment system. Access to the property is via US Forest Service easement. No objections were received from the US Forest Service when they were contacted for interdepartmental review. The uses of the proposed PU D overlay district appear to meet the Pennington County's zoning ordinance section two sixteen. Number five, the applicant will also need to work through the approach permitting, uh, with county highway. Number six, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district appear to meet Pennington County's zone, Pennington County zoning ordinance section three, two sixteen. And lastly, number seven, future land use is identified as rancher and suburban residential. Zoning districts, the operation of the proposed specialty resort will take place on the rancher portion of the property. Therefore, the proposed use is consistent with the adopted county comprehensive plan with an approved PU D overlay. On the screen is a site plan for what the applicant is proposing. As it sits today, the property does have a single-family residence that was built in nineteen seventy-four, as well as a detached garage, uh, two thirteen by twenty-foot observation decks and an onsite wastewater treatment system. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Highway did state that an approach permit must be filed with the highway department as well as an access easement through Forest Service, if not already obtained, for well and power access. Uh, they also stated a variance to the Board of Commissioners for a fire escape route must be granted. Anything built within the right of way must be built to ordinance fourteen standards, and these are included as conditions of approval. Emergency services stated that it appears the existing physical address is not posted well on South Rockerville Road as required. They also stated that they recommend posting physical address of the business and a unique tent site number in, in each tent. There should also be a signage from the driveway, two direct responders to each tent site. All signs should be reflected for higher visibility at night, and these are addressed as conditions of approval as well. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is requesting a specialty resort, two included caretaker residence, three tents for luxury camping and one luxury treehouse. Each tent will measure thirteen by sixteen and will be, will be placed on one of the thirteen by twenty-two foot raised decks. No plans were provided for the treehouse. Power to the tents will be provided via solar panels and potable water will be provided to the main residence or from their ma- main residence. A communal bathroom will be provided to, and will have its own onsite wastewater treatment system. Uh, just to kind of give you an idea of what they're proposing here, um, on the screen. Uh, this is kind of a, a glamping style of resort with tents on top of decks. Uh, just some more, uh, photos that the applicant has provided. This isn't of the property. This is just an example.
Was this before us a while back?
Uh, I believe it was, might have been at your Planning Commission meeting if you were present for one of those.
It seems like I seen this couple of years back, this type of.
We do have another, uh, property under canvas that this is similar to.
Okay, so that's similar.
It's a similar experience.
Okay, that must have been what I'm remembering.
So with that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's re- request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval of PU D overlay twenty-two dash zero four with conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
I, so Jason, I think this is kind of a cool business idea. Ho- however, the one question I have, and I'm not opposed to it, is are they going to have to provide plans for that future treehouse whenever they decide they want to do it? I mean, are we going to have a building permit for that? I mean, is it, there's a process for that to make sure everything's squared away and it's?
Most definitely. Yep.
Okay.
Any further discussion and questions? I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move for approval by Laster seconded by Ross Connect. Any further discussion? Does the applicant want to say anything? Nope. Nope, good, good call. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, motion carries. It's been approved. Thank you. Next we come to item S.
All right, last but not least. Agenda item S, planning unit development overlay twenty-two dash zero five to allow planning unit development overlay for a recreational resort to include RV spots, a wedding venue, bed and breakfast and outdoor recreational activities. The applicant is Angela Lidle of River Country Limited Partnership. Site location is twenty-two eight oh one Jensen Road. That is north of the, north and east of Wausau, South Dakota. Currently zoned agriculture district. Uh, existing land uses are residential and agriculture. Access is off Jensen Road and there is special flood hazard area on the property. Again, the criteria for PU D overlays is on the screen. I'll read staff's responses, beginning with number one, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district conform to the uses by right or conditional uses permitted in an agricultural zoning district. Number two, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district are of a type and are located to minimize detrimental influence upon the surrounding properties. Number three, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district meet Pennington County zoning ordinance sections three twenty-three and three oh six which govern bed and breakfast and recreational vehicle parks. Number four, the proposed PU D overlay district is two thousand eight hundred eleven point five nine acres. Number five, the proposed PU D overlay district is owned by River Country Limited Partnership. The business is listed as limited partnership and is in good standing according to the South Dakota Secretary of State. Number six, given the remote locations of the RV parking spots, each RV parking spot will be marked with a unique spot number clearly visible from the driveway. The uses of the proposed PU D overlay district are not designed as to be detrimental or to endanger the public health, safety or general welfare. And number seven refers us to the next table, starting with number one, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district conform to the uses by right or conditional uses permitted in an agricultural zoning district. Number two, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Number three, given the remoteness of the propos- the proposed PU D overlay district, the uses should not impede the normal orderly development improvement of surrounding properties and the, of the properties for use permitted in the district. Number four, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district meet Pennington County ordinance sections three twenty-three and three oh six which govern bed and breakfast and recreational vehicle parks. Number five, Jensen Road utilizes an on and off ramps that access inters- existing on and off ramps that is access Interstate ninety. And number six, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district appear to meet Pennington County zoning ordinance section two sixteen. Property history, there is a twenty-six by thirty-six equipment building, fourteen by twenty farm utility building, forty-one by forty-nine quantum building, as well as a tool shed and a single-family residence. There is a onsite wastewater treatment system for the existing residents. Uh, there are eleven different tax IDs that we're talking about with this PU D. It's rather large, and the RV spots will be, uh, spread out throughout the properties. Uh, the goal here for the applicant is to have more or less, it's called mooch docking, um, kind of a, a rustic pad, basically, just a bare minimum where people can come park their RVs for a night, uh, taking the land, uh, enjoy some of the amenities she has out there to offer and, uh, be on their way without having any impact to the property at all. So with that, she is requesting that, uh, porta potties be placed out there as a means of onsite wastewater treatment. Um, the wedding venue, she doesn't plan to operate at all. There is going to be no structure. Uh, she, she may plan to do that in the future, um, if future generations decide to continue this operation. Uh, but as of right now, there are no plans to have a structure for that event. Uh, parking is adequate on the property. Uh, the request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Highway did state that if average, average da- daily traffic exceeds two hundred and fifty, then Jensen Road must be improved to pavement in accordance with ordinance fourteen, and this is addressed as a condition of approval. Emergency services also had concerns stating that they need to ensure the applicant has their assigned house number posted in accordance with ordinance number twenty, and if the RV spots are approved, they would likely need a second address for the business with lot numbers posted at each RV site, and these are also included as conditions of approval. County environmental planner, um, had concerns over the original request because there weren't any means of onsite wastewater addressed, but the applicant has addressed that with porta potties. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is proposing utilize the property for self-contained recreational vehicle parking. The sites will not have electricity, water or wastewater treatment services provided. Uh, the applicant is also proposing to utilize the existing single-family residence as a bed and breakfast. Uh, the applicant has provided state approved letters for onsite wastewater treatment system for that use. Uh, Department of Equalization does list the single-family residence as owner occupied, and she has, uh, provided a safety plan, so for that portion of the zoning ordinance, she does meet those requirements. Uh, again, with the proposed wedding venue, it's going to be all outdoors, no structure at all. Uh, with that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval of PU D overlay twenty-two dash zero five with conditions.
Thanks, Jason, and I think wi- with this item, I'm assuming you're Angela out there in the audience. You're the last one left. Uh, I, I'm just assuming when I was reading through this that, you know, this is quite the concept of what you're wanting to do, and I have to give our staff probably some great credit for working through this because with the way these lots are all split up, I think. Do you think what they came up with was fair?
Oh, yes. Oh, Angela Lidle.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they've been very helpful, walked me through it, told me what I needed to do, and that there again, the wedding venue thing, they were like, you know, anything you think that could possibly be used for listed well, that was one of the things. I really don't have a plan of going that direction, but if another generation wanted to, that's their deal. But they said just cover everything you can now so we don't have to go through this process again.
There you go.
And I want the land to remain ag usable, which is our main thing, and that's why I didn't want to have to put in any of the amenities or anything. It's just come in and park and be gone, and when cows come home in the fall, they can graze it and no issues.
Sounds good, Angela. I'll go and do this. Commissioner, you have any questions?
I don't.
For staff? I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Been moved by Laster, seconded by Ross Connect to, uh, move, approve the planning unit development overlay PU twenty-two oh five twenty nine with twenty-nine conditions.
Correct.
Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. You guys do a great job.
Next we have item twenty-five, the twenty-two legislative session recap and some, some study topics. This must be Gary in hands off to Holly when needed, right?
So, probably the biggest one on the studies is going to be on the jails.
Okay.
And I, I don't know how optimistic to look at that of actually coming up with some answers for, um, around the state as far as jails are concerned. I mean, it's a huge, huge subject for them to undertake, and, uh, I have a feeling that at the end of it, uh, they're gonna, it's, I think it'll turn out to be kind of a little bit like the housing one did this year, where the committee itself really didn't come back with a report. Individual members really are the ones that tried to carry the ball with it. That's the way I look at this too, is that there may be some individual members, legislative members of that committee that'll try to put some legislation together to try to, uh, try to help. But it's such a massive task themselves.
We can probably count on another bill next year for sales tax probably.
Could well be, yeah. So, and then, oh, there's one other study that's kind of, oh, there's, there's one they're talking about for the property tax too. Yeah, there's two of them, but there's one on the property tax. Uh, again, I, I mean, I don't know what kind of footing that might, that might get. Um, it's going to be tough. Tough this year. It's a, you know, you set up those interim committees and then you got, uh, it's election year also. Uh, so, you know, it's tough to get them all together and.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a big subject.
Okay, so we'll move on to items from Commission Manager, the policy and procedure update for appointment process for committees and boards. Ms. Holly Hennings.
Yes, Commissioners, this is a request to update our process. Um, we've had some challenges recently and needed some of the areas clarified. So I have highlighted the major changes for you. Um, it would include adding a background check to the process and being able to prescreen some of the
Okay.
applications, so we're not interviewing ten people at once. Um, and the ability to reappoint the current sitting member who may be in that position, um, without reopening.
I will say this, Holly. Some of these commissioners probably weren't here when we come up with this policy for, for, uh, interviewing people and, cause before all this started, the interview process was from right where Holly is. Uh, in a regular meeting, you're, and you're trying to do it. So we come up with this. And the whole in-depth was more for the planning commission. You know, a few other ones. So when Holly come up to ask me about switching this around and we know what the intent was. It's, it's to try to keep the politics out of the higher, or not, appointing process a little bit and try to get to know the applicants a little bit better in certain areas. And so it, and some of these, it's created a burden for the office.
Yeah.
And staff. And so I have no concern over your changes to the policy. So I'd look for a motion to approve the changes to the interim policy.
I like them. I would certainly, uh, note the approval.
Moved by Drew, seconded by McCroy. You held out too long.
I, I'm still kind of reading some of it, so I looked through some of it. And, and maybe because I probably have some questions about, do they have to provide their own background or do, or do we have to do that for them?
We will do it.
Okay.
And address a little bit about that. Some of that you just don't know. I think that's more of a gut feeling or if we have like the four-H, where you're working with kids and we're putting board members on there. You know, we probably should consider that, you know. Do you need a little more time to read or you're?
No, I was just.
We can always bring it back too.
I guess I didn't get a chance to read that as much because I had a lot of other things that I was reading up and having questions about during the timeframe. So I just kind of perused over that and was working through some other stuff. So, I mean, nothing jumped out at me big time that I can see. Cause all it is, is all the yellow is just additional, correct? The rest, this whole policy has already been there. It's just the yellow is adding to it. Is that correct?
The yellow is either adding to it or a change from what the previous pol- previous policy was, yes.
Okay.
So we have motion in a second. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Items from Chair, Commission Members. Does anybody else have anything else they would like to report on? Give me the look.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm good if I don't want to hear anything major, because I think we've been here for a while and I've got to be.
Yeah, so the only thing, Gary, did you have anything?
Not, no, not on that. I mean, most of that was all covered earlier today.
Yeah.
With Box Elder and Rapid, Rapid Valley, San Diego District and stuff here, so.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say is about those meetings and that was it.
Yeah. The only thing I'd bring up is this Thursday is the cultural, uh, tour of Ogawa on Thursday at seven-thirty, and I think.
I'm signed up.
Me and Gary are signed up for that. That's through MOA, HR, Human Relations. It, we're going to tour around Pine Ridge and get some education on the culture and so forth.
I would have signed up for that, except my son has an event this, uh, April seventh that I'm helping him with.
And one of the things I did attend was, uh, the Circle of Healing at Oyate on La Crosse Street last Tuesday, which was, uh, it was good. I got put on the spot to speak and I wasn't ready for it, so I denied it, so. But, uh, that was a good, good event with a lot of, uh, the healthcare board from Oyate were there and described what they do and what services they provide for our community, and so that was good. Otherwise, we'll go to committee reports.
And I'll make it quick. Uh, I went to the Defense Symposium and it was a good, uh, symposium to learn a lot about PFAS. It's very technical. It was mainly focused on the cleanup and the, and the, and the process of the cleanup, not necessarily how it's impacting things. There was a toxicologist there. They did talk about how it does impact. There was questions about how it impacts, but they're still doing a lot of research on that. But projected time for cleanup remediation in the area, about thirty years, just to be aware. Um, but they at least have a timeline and they have some, they have machines that they have in test phases that can do like five-hundred gallons right now. They're going to be expanding them to see if they can do more volumes of water of treatment. But it's a long-term cleanup plan and, and they're working through it. But they're working with a school of mines in a lot of this, uh, for the engineering, uh, stu- with the engineering students there, so that's pretty good. Uh, I wasn't at the Healthcare Trust Board because I believe the symposium was during that timeframe. And then, uh, I was at the Community Health Center Board meeting, um, on the phone, so I kind of got some and not some, but Lloyd was there, so I'll let you. If there was anything that I missed, I don't remember anything being significant of that one. Uh, and then the big one is the PFAS, uh, PFO Town Hall. Uh, we had a full room and then some people out in the, in the waiting area. It was well attended, I believe, by a lot of people that are impacted by the, uh, contaminated water from the base. Good presentations from the base. A lot of the presentation, the individuals did know, but there was some updated information. Uh, the commit, uh, that group of individuals, the, the affected landowners and the, the presenters all agreed at the end of the meeting that it would probably be beneficial to have a biannual meeting. Um, if the county is willing to host, uh, in the future as well, because it makes it easier for them. They don't have to deal with all the red tape dealing with the base and, and setting it up through the base. If we hosted it, it makes it a little bit easier for them to come out here and we can get the, the citizens here. It may not necessarily be a request for a biannual. It'll only be based on if they have some significant in, uh, information to update the community with. And if that's, and so if those, if those come up, I'll reach out to the Board of Commissioners again and, and let y'all know that, hey, they're wanting to put together another, um, town hall informational meeting because of some updates that are coming out. So anyway, it was well attended and I think it was well, uh, worth the county doing it, and I think it was a success.
Good deal. Um, Extension Board, I, four-H, I attended by Zoom and we just pretty much went over the budget a little bit and took some intakes. That wasn't your normal business. Uh, one of the, the building, building committee, uh, building committee's been helpful with that new system that they're going down, narrowing down what they're going to go forward with. And I think I, I'm kind of grateful for the building committee meetings because after what, listening to Box Elder and Rapid Valley, uh, coming here asking for their requests and then seeing what our needs are. And as far as the building committees, we've got a lot of needs in our, in our own campus here, along with outsourcing, so that was good to, to be a part of that. And that's one of the things we're going to keep in mind. Maybe we'll have to ask, uh, the building committee for a report of what some of their needs are when we get ready to do this by next meeting. Um, other thing, community health was pretty much, uh, same thing. Common business went over the, the budget and numbers per month. The MacArthur Safety Justice Challenge I will bring back next meeting. I think we need to have a little discussion on that. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there on there. We sent out, uh, the updates of what's happening with that, but we'll come up with something for next meeting. I'm trying to think of what else to.
I do.
I think that's it.
I'll do Ron and mine together, cause kind of cross over a little bit here. So Ron and Deb, both as members of the Pennington County Housing Authority are up on those repositioning, uh, and redevelopment meeting, hut meeting on section eight. Uh, should be an interesting, uh, trip for both of them. Uh, they also had, talked about their, their budget. They're working on their budget already. Uh, Elevate Rapid City, uh, I, I think Ron met with the people from Northrop's, uh, Northrop Bruman.
Me too.
Oh, you and you too?
Yeah.
So that should have been pretty interesting with, meeting with them. Are they ready to build or?
Well, uh, basically they were just giving a, an overview and kind of stamping down a lot of the rumors about how many people that they were bringing out this way and how big their footprint was going to be. That's a lot of what I got from Northrop Bruman's briefing.
Okay, so the rumors added that they were bringing a lot more than what I think they are actually are, is that?
Right, they're bringing about thirty for, for their particular piece of it.
Yeah. That's still quite a few people.
It is. But, but there's been higher numbers around here.
Uh, Benton County Council of Aging, Kurt Rising, the owner of Medicine Shop here in Rapid. They may have other branches too that I'm not aware of. Uh, but he talked to the group about free services to seniors relative to home monitoring scans that they can do. Uh, and at that Council of Aging, they worked on updating the bylaws. Uh, Diamond, uh, that's already been talked about. Black Hills Stock Show, while the, we had the annual marri- meeting of the Central States Fair. Three new board members went on, Anna Wedham, Justin Tupper, and Kelby Lamb. Um, all come highly recommended to be on that, on that board. So, um, Much, Yusara, Dean Johnson. And I'm not thinking of who else is going off. Anyway, um, MPO, they reviewed and rated the twenty-twenty-two applications uh, for the section fifty-three-ten that involves the, the handicapped. Uh, so the ones that are always in the running on that are Black Hills Works and Prairie Hills Transits, uh, are both in on that. And then Jeff Tomac, uh, from Black Hills Forest, uh, announced the, set, set the date and the place for the first meeting of the county commissioners to work on cooperating agency status that revised Black Hills Forest Plan. And that's going to be held here in our building on April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two. That's about it?
Okay. Um, approval of vouchers. Six hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-six. That's moved by Gary, seconded by Lester, all in favor and indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Executive session, I think we've only got one item. And.
Move to go to executive session?
Moved by Lester, seconded by Drews to go into executive session, all in favor indicate.
Is it for personnel or contractual?
Contractual.
Contractual, sorry.
That's okay.
For contractual purposes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Move to come out of executive session?
Second.
Moved and seconded to come out of executive session. All in favor, say aye.
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 Move to authorize the chair's signature on the encroachment agreement between Michael and Angela Holmberg in Pennington County?
Second.
Moved by Lester, seconded by Drews. All, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to adjourn?
Moved and seconded by Drews to adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned.